Again, I know someone here who knows the land board to this place.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Collin, are you ready? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is being called to order. Mr. Collin.
Council President, I am ready to proceed whenever you are.
Alrighty, we'll move forward. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trent Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in the City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the city of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call, Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Uh, Mr. Blakely.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Caldwell-Wolfs.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison is absent. Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Council President McBride.
Present.
Thank you. Council President, would you like me to call the directors?
Please.
Mr. Cruz.
Good evening in present.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Cherry.
I'm present. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Liston.
I'm present.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Bridges. Mr. Bridges. Uh, and, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Liston, could you remind me the name of the acting director of the police department?
James Slack.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Slack, are you present, sir?
I'm present.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Chief Mazzio.
Good evening, present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Delaun.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Lopez.
Present. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Director Onatiri.
Uh, good evening, present.
Thank you, sir. Director Richardson.
I am present. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am. Uh, Director Laub.
Good evening, present.
Good evening, sir. Directors Zelensky. For acting.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Council President, the, uh, Mr. Harrison, have you arrived yet, sir?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Council President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, I would.
Uh, if we could all bow our heads for an invocation. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, before the invocation, if you could please mute your devices. Uh, star six to mute your devices. If IT could aggressively mute, we would greatly appreciate that. Uh, the star six to unmute yourself if you should get, uh, chance to speak. If we could all bow our heads for the invocation. Almighty God, who holds the state of Manhattan, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
Could all rise for the flag, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council President, would you like me to proceed with these?
Yes, please.
Uh, there are, as I indicated on Tuesday, there will be minutes at the next meeting. Uh, there are nineteen communications, petitions, and reports on the docket. Uh, do I have, uh, there are no, the report was given at the beginning of the month, the financial report. Actually, there are no reports. There are nineteen communications and petitions. Do I have a motion to approve the communications and petitions as ordered?
No, ma'am.
I have a second.
Second.
A second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
So what? Any votes? So what? Thank you. Council President, uh, we have a second reading in public hearing of two ordinances.
Excuse me, Mr. Collin, we're gonna go straight into the executive session.
Yes, ma'am. Council President is authorized to go straight into the executive session. Uh, we're joining the executive session resolution to adjourn the meeting. Uh, this is Resolution twenty-one dash two ninety-nine, authorizing the City Council of City Trent to hold an executive session, which excludes the public. Be resolved by the City Council of City Trent, and this body will convene in executive session in the City Council Conference Room, City Hall. In this case, Microsoft Teams, that will be limited to consideration of an item or items with respect to which may the public may be excluded pursuant to Section seven B of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon fourteen dash twelve. The general nature of the subject or subjects to be discussed: personnel, opportunity to be heard, assumed to the Trenton City Code; attorney-client privilege, auction, purchase procedures, methods of payment; personnel, a discussion of a workplace incident. Data is precisely as presently possible the following is the time when the circumstances under which the discussion conducted at said meeting can be disclosed to the public, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, or when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Whichever is later, the public is excluded from said meeting and further notice is dispensed with, all in accordance with Sections eight and four A of the Open Public Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
No, ma'am.
I motion, Council President Collin Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, but Council President McBride, now call the roll. Mr. Blakely.
Uh, I'm gonna vote no, because I think that we should have the executive session at the end of the, uh, meeting, rather than the beginning of the meeting, to respect all of the people who are on the call. So I'm gonna vote no. Thank you.
Council President Collin Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted six to one. It is so ordered. Council adjourned to executive session at five thirty-six P.M. If IT could put the notice up for the council being in executive session, it would be greatly appreciated. Ladies and gentlemen, the council has adjourned to executive session. We will be returning to the regular meeting. As soon as the council finishes its executive session, I do not have a time estimate at this portion. Uh, I do believe it will be in excess of an hour, um, and, but there will be a notice up on the screen. The notice will be removed once we have returned from the regular meeting, so please keep checking back with us. This meeting link will remain open while the council adjourns to executive session, at which point the regular meeting will continue. We thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you at the return of the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna be getting the council meeting again. Uh, if you would remain muted throughout the meeting, we would greatly appreciate it. Uh, relevant public portions will be open to the public. Uh, during those portions, you can use star six to mute or unmute yourself. Uh, if you are on a landline or a non-smartphone, uh, use the microphone at the appropriate time. If you are on a landline, if you are on a landline or a non-smartphone, please dial star nine to raise or unraise your hand. Uh, Council President, are you ready to proceed, or I'm not sure if we have a quorum yet. I think everybody's trying to still get back in.
Yes, it's, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wolson in. Uh, Councilman Rodriguez.
I'm here.
Councilman Rodriguez, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Um, Councilman Harrison, are you here? Councilman Yushao, are you here?
I'm here.
Councilman Blakely, are you here? So I'm, I'm missing Councilman Harrison and Councilman Blakely.
And Mr. Klowgi, have you returned?
Councilman Harrison's here.
Oh, there we go. Mr. Harrison's here.
I'm present.
Is, is Mr. Bridges here?
He is Council President, I assure you.
Alrighty, Mr. Klowgi.
Mr. Klowgi isn't here. I see him in the room, ma'am. He's just muted. Councilman Blakely's here. Thank you, sir. Uh, Council President, would you like?
Okay, we may continue with the meeting.
Uh, I, I just gotta, I just gotta formally call the roll for the record, ma'am, if you don't mind. Uh, thank you, ma'am. Uh, now call the roll, Mr. Blakely. Present. Ms. Caldwell-Wolfs.
Present.
Mr. Harrison.
Present.
Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Vaughn.
Present.
Council President McBride.
Present.
Mr. Cruz.
Present, sir.
Mr. Cherry.
I'm present. Good evening again.
Mr. Liston.
Present.
Mr. Bridges is present. Mr. Slack.
I'm present.
Thank you. Mr. Mazzio.
Present.
Mr. Delaun.
Present.
Mr. Doctor, Dr. Lopez.
Present.
Director Onatiri.
Present.
Director Richardson.
Present.
Director Levinberg.
Present.
Mrs. Zelensky.
Present.
And Mr. Klowgi is also present. Council President, we have a quorum. The directors are present. Would you like them to proceed to?
Yes, please.
The next item on the docket. The next item on the docket are public hearings. This is the second reading in public hearing for several ordinances. I will read them into the record. I will open up the floor for a public hearing, which point we will close the floor. The council will have their turn to speak, and then we will have the vote. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I now declare open public hearing for ordinance twenty-one dash zero one three, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of gifts of certain real properties adjacent to Edgewood Avenue Park, block two-two-zero-two, lot forty-seven, block twenty-seven-oh-one, lot four. Council President, may I open the floor?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to be heard for the public hearing for ordinance twenty-one dash oh one three, please raise your hand. You can only speak as to the ordinance on the docket. Um, at the current time, there will be a term to speak, uh, for public portion for anything that you wish to speak on later on. So would anybody wish to be heard only for the public hearing on ordinance twenty-one dash zero one three? Council President, we have Angel Villanueva.
Yes, it's Ben Slade.
Uh, Angel Villanueva, you have been recognized by the Council President. You have the floor. Angel Villanueva, you have been given the floor to the Council President. Council President Angel Villanueva has lowered their hand. Does anybody else wish to be spoke, does anybody else wish to be heard for the public hearing of ordinance twenty-one dash oh one three? This is an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a gift of certain real properties adjacent to Edgewood Avenue Park, blocks two-two-oh-two, lot forty-seven, and block twenty-seven-oh-one, lot four. Second call. Do I have a motion to close?
Yes. Hello?
Yes, ma'am. You'd like to speak to the ordinance?
It's Sherry Greff from West Trenton. This ordinance is the one that's gonna be gifted to the city?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my only thought, my only thought is that, don't the city have enough, uh, city-owned properties? Um, I know it was, uh, something that was, um, the Board of Education has, but, um, why can't that property be put up for sale instead of being placed on the city tax roll? I understand it has some environmental issues, but first let's try to sell the property as it is, in the condition it is in, and with all the other things that come along with it, and see if there's a buyer for it before we take on that responsibility. That's all I have to say on it.
Is there anyone else, Mr. Collin?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is me. This is the last call for a public hearing on ordinance twenty-one dash oh one three. Uh, does anybody else wish to be heard? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So good.
I have a motion to my Ms. Caldwell-Wolfs to close the public hearing. I have a second.
Second.
Uh, because this is a public hearing, would I ask for a roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Caldwell-Wolfs. Close the public hearing, ma'am?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Council President, the floor is open.
If there's no questions from the, uh, council members, anyone have any questions pertaining to this ordinance? If not, we can move to vote. Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am. This is a roll call vote for the adoption of ordinance twenty-one dash oh one three, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of certain, gift of certain real properties adjacent to Edgewood Avenue Park, block two-two-oh-two, lot forty-seven, block two-seven-oh-one, lot four. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell-Wolfs.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride. The order, the ordinance is adopted. Next, we have a public hearing. I now declare a public hearing open on ordinance twenty-one dash oh one five, an ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as twelve-eleven East State Street, block two-six-eight-oh-one, lot four pursuant to NJSA forty cap A, colon twelve-dash thirteen B five, to Santander Bank, N.A., for the sum of twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it was actually moved by, it's not ready for move. The last one was moved by the Council President to note it for the record, uh, because she moved to the vote. This one is open to the public for the public hearing. Uh, can we actually, uh, have any members of the public who wish to speak for the public hearing?
Steer no hands.
I apologize. I apologize. Uh, Council President, what is this one, in depth, uh, what is this one pertaining to? It, we didn't give much. I apologize. I don't have the agenda in front of me.
This is ordinance twenty-one dash oh one five. So this is an order, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city's tax map as twelve-eleven East State Street. I'm not sure what that property is, but it's block twenty-six-eight-oh-one, lot four pursuant to NJSA forty cap A, twelve-dash thirteen B five, to Santander Bank for the sum of twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. So the city's selling a piece of property pursuant to state law, and I don't know what the law says, to Santander Bank for the sum of twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes, uh, my comment, if I may, uh, Council President Sherry Greff from West Trenton.
Uh, Council President Sherry Greff.
Mm-hmm. Go right ahead. Let's go ahead.
Yes, uh, here we go with another property, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, is the, is there reason that we're selling it at that, uh, uh, price? Uh, is, what is it, a small lot that no one can do anything with? Uh, and what's the, I mean, we buy properties here in the city of Trenton, ha- half a million dollars, but when we're selling it, we only sell it. I just, I don't understand. How are we gonna make some money here in this city? I mean, what's the deal why we're selling this property for just twenty-five thousand dollars? I, I, please, somebody explain that.
Council President, would you like to have the, uh, administration answer the question, ma'am?
Council President, I can do it real brief.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, this is, this, this, this is part of their parking lot. This built, this structure is on the part of their parking lot, and it's been vacant for many, many years.
Council President, this is Ben Delaun. May I add some clarity? Answer the question? Thank you. Uh, just real briefly, uh, Councilwoman is absolutely correct. It is a small, um, piece of a parking lot that's existing. It was found that they didn't, uh, own it when title was done. It's an undersized lot, and the purchase price was established by an appraisal, by an independent appraiser. So it's being sold for fair market value.
How much are they paying in property taxes? I mean, is that what, is, is what, they're all gonna pay taxes on that small little lot for twenty-five thousand dollars? And do they pay a?
Point of information, is this proper? It's a public hearing, so yes, they, it's an open. Is it a dialogue, or are we to hear? Is it a public dialogue?
If we have to listen to that nonsense that you put out, um, every, every other week, uh, Mr. Councilman.
You should run. If you're elected and be, if you're interested in being elected, you should run.
Mr. Blakely, a point of.
I will. Thank you very much.
Please do.
And they are allowed to ask questions on an ordinance. It's a public hearing in reference to the ordinance as a taxpayer. They are allowed to ask questions on the ordinances. So, Mr. Delisle, had, did, uh, you answer her question?
Uh, I, I believe so, Council President. Uh, the only thing else I'd add is that, yes, they will be paying taxes, um, you know, in the future, once this property is conveyed. So it had been city-owned, and we're looking to sell it to the bank. They own the adjoining properties. Uh, and again, it's an undersized lot in and of itself. It, um, is below the minimum, um, size for development, and the purchase price was determined by a, an appraisal by an independent, uh, certified appraiser.
Thank you, Mr..
And what's the square, each of this lot?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, the question was cut off. I couldn't hear.
Mr. Red.
What is the square feet? What is the square foot of that lot, block? That's my last question. What is the square foot?
Oh, uh, I'm s- uh, I'm sorry. I don't have the appraisal in front of me. If you give me one minute, let me if I could pull the resolution up. I, it's less than four thousand square feet, which is the minimum in a business district. I know that. Um.
I can look it up for you, Mr. Delisle. I'm looking it up now.
Thank you. This, uh, it's in the previous docket. That's why I don't have it.
It's three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square foot.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Mr. Collin, is there any other hands for this particular ordinance?
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, does anybody else wish to be heard? Uh, yes, we have actually Trenton business owner.
Go right ahead. Trenton business owner, will pronounce your, um, your, uh, name, please.
Name, sure. Um, my name is, uh, Pranay Choudhary. Actually, my question was more or less answered, um, and I just wanted to add maybe, uh, it was basically about the square footage, and the square footage seems to be about par for market prices in the area. I just double-checked if that helps, um, Ms. Garrett, um, because that was, that was my first question, is that, that price was, just seemed too low. But it's more or less been answered.
Thank you. Alright, you may continue, Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am. Does anybody else have any questions? For the public hearing on, this is ordinance twenty-one dash oh one five, an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, identified on the city tax map as twelve-eleven East State Street, block twenty-six-eight-oh-one, lot four pursuant to NJSA forty cap A, colon twelve-dash thirteen B five to Santander Bank, the sum of twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Please name this is a public hearing. Does anybody else wish to be heard for the public hearing? Council President, I do have two.
Yes, this is Johnette Smart.
Uh, yes, Ms. Johnette Smart, Council President.
Go right ahead, Ms. Smart.
Uh, in, in, in reference to this property, um, it's the property near Santander Bank on the corner of Olden and East State Street, if I'm not mistaken. Is the bank still functional? I just wanna know if the bank is still in use, because it looks like it's a man, it looks like it's not being, hadn't been opened in a while.
It has.
Is it?
It has not been.
So my concern is that we sell that property to Santander Bank, and then Santander sells it and, and receives a, 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 a very, very good value, market value for that property, and here we go again, losing, losing money or not gaining money to benefit us as taxpayers. I, I kinda understand why the city might want to get rid of a piece of property, but, and again, we need to think more forward thinking when it comes to how we protect, um, us as city taxpayers with these types of purchases. It's, the, the building, from my understanding, has been, you know, left vacant for some time. It benefits Santander more than it does us for them to have that property. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Mr. Collin?
Council President, that was Janet Smart. Uh, uh, ladies and gentlemen, does anybody else wish to be heard for the public hearing for ordinance twenty-one dash oh one five?
You may continue with the vote. This, I mean, close out public comment, please.
I have a motion by Council President to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Miss Caldwell-Wolfs, because it is a public hearing. I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely.
This is to close public comment, Mr. Blakely.
Public hearing, yes. Mr. Blakely. Ms. Caldwell-Wolfs.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle. Yes, I, I said yes, I meant. Thank you. Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. I have a motion to introduce the second reading of, and adoption of, uh, ordinance twenty-one dash oh one five. I motion my counsel, Vice President Caldwell-Wolfs. Uh, do I have a second? Not necessary, but, uh, I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Council President, the floor is open.
President McBride.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Blakely.
I have a question, and I'm asking this to be clear, and I'm not trying to be, um, you know, uh, difficult, but, uh, it's my understanding that a hearing is, uh, not a dialogue, right, or a public debate or public conversation. And so I'd like to hear, uh, from our law department, um, and I could be wrong. That's why I'm asking, and that's why I made a point of information about a member of the public, uh, engaging in an extended dialogue on a matter at a public hearing. And it's been generally, um, the business of this council to not allow members of the public to engage in that type of back and forth. If that's the case, and we're doing something different now, I'd like to know, because I've seen plenty of, um, folks not given the opportunity, both at public hearings and public comment. And so, uh, I would like to just know, is that dialogue something that is appropriate? And if it is, I'm fine with that. I just wanna know, because it seems that, um, people are using this time, um, in a way that, you know, I think we should clarify is appropriate or not. Thank you.
Um, and Mr. Bridges, but we've always allowed the public to speak and get answers to their questions for ordinances. But Mr. Bridges or Mr. Klowgi, you guys could.
Well, I, I asked for Mr. Bridges, because he's the designated legal counsel here. And if, I'm not saying that it is one way or another. I'm just asking the question so that, you know, we can, uh, you know, figure out if the orations or the extended dialogue by, you know, particular people is appropriate or not. And if it is, fine. And if it's not, it should stop. Thank you.
Council President, may I?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Bridges.
Um, yeah, actually, uh, Mr. Klowgi and I, again, having anticipated some of the issues that were gonna come about at this, uh, meeting, discussed this. Um, I, I've shared my opinion, Mr. Klowgi. I believe we're on par with this, with respect to this issue. I'll allow him to answer that, um, as council's corporate, as council's legislative council.
Yeah, um, this particular issue, a hearing generally contemplates, uh, obtaining input from members of the public. Now, if a member of the public has a specific question, they can go through the chair and ask that that question be addressed by one of the departments or whoever the chair directs it to. But I think what Mr. Blakely was indicating, there should not be any direct back and forth dialogue between a member of the public and a member, let's say, of the administration who's answering the question. It should just. It should just be done through the chair, either comments through the chair or questions posed through the chair, which the chair will then have one of the department heads answer, as opposed to direct back and forth out on the floor between a person and one of the administration or someone else.
And I did ask the chair and the chair did proceed.
Thank you. Um, I hope that answered the councilman's, uh, question. And now we will move on, um, Mr. Collin, for the vote.
Uh, yes, Council President, I have an introduction by Ms. Cole Wilson, I have a second, Mr. Harrison, for the adoption of ordinance 21-015. This is ordinance authorizing sale city on property identified in the city tax map 1211 C, East State Street, block 26801, lot four pursuant to NJ SA 40 Cap A, colon 12-13B5 to Santander Bank NA for the sum of $25,500. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Cole Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
No.
Council President votes no, ordinance carries by a vote of six to one, it does pass. It is so ordered. Council President, would you like me to proceed to the document?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am, just give me one second to get my notes together. First in the document, we have resolutions in the City Clerk's office. First, we have a City Clerk resolution, uh, sponsored by Mr. Blakely and Mr. Rodriguez. A resolution supporting Assembly Bill 4526, which establishes the requirements for the use of deadly force. Uh, Mr. Blakely and Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to make a co-motion, sir?
Yeah, so move.
Yes.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mr. Blakely and Mr. Rodriguez, I will consider that also a first and a second. Floor is open. Council President, would you like me to move to the vote?
Yeah, I ha- I have a question.
Okay, come on.
Yeah, so, once this resolution goes into effect, um, can Councilman Blakely, uh, tell us, or Councilman Rodriguez, tell us how that will impact some of the, um, we have two issues of use of excessive force during the pandemic, right? The, I, I hope I'm pronouncing the citizen's name, uh, Dossomore, Dawsonmore and Mr. Orr, um, both encountered, one was fate, was a fatality and he died. And the same, the chokehold that was done, uh, was performed, applied to, uh, George Floyd, was also applied to, uh, Dawsonmore and was also applied, I mean, uh, uh, and he subsequently, uh, passed. And then the other use of force was Mr. Orr, who also, um, you know, uh, he didn't pass, he didn't die immediately, but subsequently, um, uh, due to, he succumbed to his inju- injuries over time in the hospital. Um, so, will the officers who were involved, how would this impact? I mean, what is it going to do? Uh, is it just a, a, a nice to have? Because in our city right now, the mayor is not enforcing any ordinances, uh, laws or resolutions that the council has put forward and prior councils have put forward, uh, related to any of, um, uh, of, uh, our, our, our way of life and our well-being in the city. So how is this going to, uh, affect police department reform in the Trenton Police Department, um, going forward? Councilman Blakely?
I'm happy to answer that question.
As you know, uh, a resolution in this context is just an expressed opinion of the body on a particular matter. So, um, this would have nothing to do, uh, with, uh, the internal workings of the Trenton Police Department. What we are doing by passing this resolution is affirming our support for the bills, uh, that we are, uh, discussing, as well as highlighting, uh, to the General Assembly, uh, that the City of Trenton's council, uh, supports the legislation in question. Um, you spoke very favorably on these issues on Tuesday. Um, as you know, um, resolutions generally in these contexts are just expressions of the sentiment of the body. So if we were to pass this, this would be, uh, translated or, or sent, uh, to the General Assembly, the, the Speaker, and, uh, to convey to them their, uh, our support of this, um, of this, uh, bill and other bills. And so, I mean, I'm sure you're aware of that, we definitely are not, um, you know, passing a resolution that's going to have anything to do with the issues that you discussed because a resolution of this sort is not the mechanism in which, you know, this council addresses those issues.
Well, uh, thank, thank you.
May I answer?
Yeah, he did answer. Um, are you done, Mr. Blakely?
No, and let me just finish, um, let me just finish. I mean, this council makes opinions on all matter of things, um, and just to be clear, I don't know what you're going to wa- which way you're going to vote, you're entitled to vote whatever way you want, but on Tuesday, you were emphatically, um, supportive of this resolution, expressing our opinion about this bill. And, um, it would just be bizarre if your vote is anything other than to not support. This is your prerogative, I mean, you can do what you want, but I just.
All right, so I.
You interrupt, I'm talking, I'm talking. Um, and so, you know, that's just what a resolution does. I don't understand the, the, the context or the pretext of the question. Um, you know, quite frankly, if this bill passes, uh, you know, it would make the impact on, uh, the issues that you're discussing and we're just saying to the general legis- the General Assembly that we're supporting this. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Yeah, so the reason why I asked Councilman Blakely to your point is not, you know, of course I am supportive and as I said, I will vote in favor, but too often, when it comes to police department reform and policies that affect the, um, actions of policemen and, and when it comes to them applying deadly force, um, our society has not really held them accountable. So when we talk about police department reform and we're passing bills in the state legislature or in, in Congress or in locally and, and, and local councils, um, we, I want this to, th- th- to send a strong message to, uh, the executives, uh, to, uh, Mayor Gus Yor, to, uh, Governor Murphy, right? This bill should send a message to Governor Murphy that Greenwall, uh, needs to do something and act and enact some policies that will, um, hold these officers accountable. Now, I'm all for passing bills and we know as African-Americans, Councilwoman Blakely, that too often, when, uh, deadly force have been applied across, rather it was Michael Brown, rather it's Breonna Taylor, rather it's, uh, Mr. Dawsonmore, who, who, who was not African-American, he was, he was a white male. Um, police officers generally have not been held accountable. So I'm just wanted to make sure what this resolution is going to do for the City of Trenton and our borders and what impact it will have on Mayor Gus Yor and his executive, uh, capacity to enforce, uh, 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 these, um, these, uh, requirements. Now, I don't know what the state legislature is trying to do in enforcing it to the executive, our, our governor, but resolutions are not only, I believe, um, are just the will of the council because their resolutions are executable. The mayor, my understanding, and Mr. Cologi, can you provide clarity? When, uh, a, a difference between an ordinance and a resolution? Yes, I agree with Councilman Blakely that the resolution reflects the will of the council, but in some cases, the resolution, like the resolution, we raise resolution to act contracts, right? Those go, those go to full force and effect. So.
What is your question, Councilwoman?
My, my question to Mr.
Yeah, what is the question?
But, 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 uh, my question to Mr. Cologi is that, um, what? Is, is, is that the only purpose of a re- resolution? Is that the only thing that the resolution can do? As Mr. Blakely stated, I thought that the resolution can, is also something that the mayor has to respond to in some way, shape or form. So, um, if the council passes this, will the mayor have to respond to, take some action and to implementing some level of, um, uh, policies related to deadly force in, in the City of Trenton?
Well, based upon the particular resolutions in front of us, there have already been a number of assembly bills that have contained substantial revisions to police practices in favor of what you're saying. And all these resolutions are doing is expressing the council's sentiment that that's a good thing, we support it and we want to see it enacted into law. And when it is enacted into law, assumedly, obviously the city, including the mayor and everyone else, will be under an absolute obligation to obey it and follow it and the police department. So by supporting the resolution and, I mean, yeah, by supporting the resolution, which supports the assembly bill and assuming it gets enacted into law, it will have a substantial effect because it's not going to be an option, uh, everyone is going to have to follow it in every municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Cologi. You may continue, Mr. Collin.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakely and a second mo- and a second and a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, it's a combined motion, uh, and I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, Ms. Cole Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Adopted unanimously seven to zero, so ordered. Excellent, resolution 21-258, a resolution supporting Assembly Bill 4284, which establishes a crime if a law enforcement officer uses prohibited tactics for the purpose of choking another person. So I have mo- I have motion by Mr. Blakely and a co-motion by Mr. Rodriguez. Gentlemen, would you like to make that motion? So move. And Mr. Rodriguez?
Oh, his second.
Yeah, well, I'll take it both as a first and second, just according to your gentleman's agreement earlier. Uh, the floor is open.
See, no questions?
Okay, no, I do have a question, I do have a question, Council President.
Glad to be kidding you.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I do have a question and no, Mr. Bridges, I'm not kidding. So, um, and Council President, I, I can't tolerate the law director, the City of Trenton, constantly attacking me when I'm speaking.
Please move forward, Councilwoman Vaughn.
No, no, Council President, I'm asking you, say.
I, I, I get it, move forward and we.
Okay. So, Mr. Cologi, what happens when that happens? Because this is unacceptable.
Right there.
I will not be undermined and demeaned in my elected capacity.
Councilwoman Vaughn, move to your question on this resolution, please.
Again, uh, uh, but, again.
Move to your question.
No, I, no, I'm not, I can't move to my question because I was just attacked by the law director.
Or we will move on. Move to your question, Councilwoman Vaughn.
No, I, I, I'm not going to move to my question, my, my question is about respect to another councilperson by the law director.
I have a joint motion by Mr. Blakely, a second and a joint motion by Mr. Rodriguez, uh, and I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Cole Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Councilwoman Vaughn, your vote, ma'am?
Would you like to place a vote with this resolution, Ms. Vaugh- Councilwoman Vaughn?
You moved on without me, Council President.
That's my vote, ma'am. Otherwise, I will enter no vote.
No vote.
I have a no vote by Ms. Vaughn? Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted six to zero. Excellent, resolution 21-260, also co-sponsored by Mr. Blakely and Mr. Rodriguez, a resolution supporting Assembly Bill 5301, which requires access to law enforcement disciplinary records to be considered government records and shall be made available to public access. Just note there is a typo that will be corrected, uh, the I and O are transposed in resolution. I have a joint motion by Mr. Blakely and Mr. Rodriguez, gentlemen, would you like to signify that, ma'am?
So move.
Thank you, sir. I have a co- joint co-motion by Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Blakely, Council President, would you like to open the floor?
Yes, I have a question, Council President.
Go right ahead.
To Mr. Cologi. Mr. Cologi, in the event that these bills are not enacted into law and not passed on this state assembly or legislature, what value would they have in the City of Trenton?
Well, they would have no value if they were not enacted, existing law preceding them would still remain in effect. These bills are to either add, supplement or modify existing laws. If they don't get passed, then whatever the current law is will still remain in effect or the lack of current law.
The President, President McBride?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
So I just want to be clear that these, the resolution in this context is simply the expressed opinion of this body. All it is, it's not going to change the world, it's not going to, uh, solve the problem that we're discussing. All it is, is this body, if it passes, coming to an agreement saying that the Trenton City, the City of Trenton City Council supports a particular issue. I mean, to think that this resolution would solve the issue that it's addressing, that's not the intent. It's not setting a rule at all. It's a resolution, which is simply an opinion. So if you agree with the information outlined in the resolution, vote for it. If you don't agree with it, vote against it. But, you know, vote against it. But all it is, is just our expressed opinion. I don't understand why this is like a, uh, a, 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 a huge deal or, or some sort of the question.
Council, please find that person to mute them, uh, I'd tell you if you can, there's a lot of people in here, so. I will look as well.
Thank you, Councilman.
Please concede.
Well, I'm pressing it.
Yes.
Council President?
Oh.
I think it's.
I heard Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, I'd like to say something to.
Go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
Hey, Ms. Vaughn, although in the enforcement, these resolutions that we are passing are not going to be able to, eh, enforce anything in Trenton. But they are very, is very, very important that the assembly and the Senate knows that 84,000 people that we represent in Trenton agree that those laws have to be changed because they're still lost in the, in the books that allows for chokeholds. Yes, they're still in the books, there's still a lot of laws in the book. And what we are trying to do, and what the state is trying to do, the assembly is trying to do, is to change, give it, change those laws and make it more, eh, so that the police officers, police accountability, we will have police accountability in the whole state. That, that's going to go in Washington also, but it's very important, very important that the assembly knows that we are using our democratic right to communicate with them and let them know what they should be doing. You know, if these laws are still in the books, it's because us, the residents, never care about fighting them. Now, the residents of Trenton are saying that we are in support of changing those laws. That's all it means.
Council President?
Call, well.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Callwell-Wilson.
Yes, um, the purpose, these resolutions serve a purpose, um, because we are letting our legislators know that we need these kind of laws in our cities and in our towns. And it shows support for them to get this legislation passed so that we can move forward and hopefully have some regulations that are badly needed in the city. And these re- these resolutions do go to the legislator and they can see the municipalities that support it. Thank you.
And Mr. Collin, you may continue.
Yes, ma'am.
Council President?
Yes.
Uh, I, I wanted to inter- iterate, just the same thing that, uh, my colleague said. It's, uh, it's about the community, uh, sticking together, assembly, the city council members, and at the end of the day, you're right, it's all about accountability. So it's good to see that all of us on this council are agreeing on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Collin?
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion by, a joint motion by Mr. Blakely and Mr. Rodriguez, and I'll call the roll, this is resolution 21-260. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Cole, roll.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered, resolution passes unanimously. Council President, I wanted to get those off the top, because we wanted to do those at the top. Uh, do you want to proceed to the consent agenda or did you want to proceed to resolution 21-301 before the consent agenda?
Okay, continue with, uh, 21-301.
changes, uh, earlier today by the Law Department. Uh, they were not significant changes, but because it was amended, uh, I do just, uh, want to read it into the record, you should bear with me while I put a version up on the screen. Ladies and gentlemen, this is resolution twenty-one three oh one. The, the resolution that is in your packet is slightly different than the one, uh, that is actually on the floor. It was slightly amended before it came to the floor. Uh, read this into the record. This is resolution twenty-one dash three oh one. This was edited by the Law Department, received this, uh, four o'clock this afternoon, just for some, uh, statutory corrections and some, um, and actually, there is still, I'm sorry, this is not the latest version. My apology. Hold on one second.
Can Mr. Kalogi review that change?
Uh, Mr. Kalogi did not review the change. It was mostly just moving stuff into the now therefore be it resolved, uh, that some of the sentences overlapped, there were some colon changes. Uh, the changes were sent to me by Sally Samuel, and you have the ability to reject these changes, but they were sent to the Law Department. So, madam, do you want me to go, and I'll show you the differences if you want.
Mr. Kalogi on the line, we can review in here, matter of fact.
So, Mr. Kalogi, I've actually put it up on the screen.
Can you show me? Can you show me, please?
I'm sorry, I'm in by a phone call. If you could just, uh, is it possible for you to, you know, explain just on, you know, line by line, so to speak, what changes were made?
Sure.
Sorry to make it harder.
No, 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 that's not a problem. Let me, uh, let me pull out, actually, their editorial changes, because I have them right here. So, um... Okay, so, uh, in line one, they, uh, they wanted to eliminate the comma, uh, that was no big deal, the comma, it's, um, superfluous. Line two, they wanted the, uh, the, I believe, the section symbol removed, and at a certain point between the edits, uh, the forty had disappeared, so they re, wanted to reinsert the forty sixty-nine A. That was a typographical error, so they corrected that. They, once again, they wanted all the commas removed after the ends, uh, where the now therefore be it resolved, um, oh, I'm sorry, in the, um, one, two, three, four, fifth whereas clause, they wanted between, uh, in the last sentence, the last couple of words, between end and adequate reasons, and provide adequate reasons. They wanted to insert the word provide. Um, they also wanted to change, uh, I'm sorry, let me go back to the first whereas clause, because I actually received two different edits. So also in the first whereas clause, they wanted to, after Sheila Coley, they wanted the words here and after Director Coley, uh, inserted just to, you know, make this, uh, the notification. Once again, they wanted to remove these, uh, the section symbol from the whereas clause number two, and whereas clause number three, uh, they just changed some capitalizations that I had received in the dur, in, in, uh, the version that I received. Uh, they wanted to change those to small case letters, just a grammatical change, uh, and once again, remove the section symbol. In the last sentence of whereas clause number three, uh, it read in apparent reliance upon, and they changed that in apparent compliance with NJSA forty, colon, sixty-nine A.
No, I, I don't think that should have been said like that.
It's fine.
I agree with what you said, it seems ministerial, but it was, you know, that language was intended to be put there.
No, and, and that's why, and that's why I'm bringing it up now. So you wish, and Ms. Vaughn, you want to keep that language, correct?
I want to keep the language, yes.
So I'm going to actually change this while we're here, uh, and you can actually see the changes. So in that whereas clause, that is the third whereas clause, in apparent, uh, and this is, uh-
It'll be-
-reliance upon.
Mr. Colwell, can you zoom in a little bit? I'm blind, I can't see.
Well, uh, 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 and, uh, let me just go through the editorial changes with Mr. Kalogi, and then I will zoom in and read it into the record, I promise you.
I can't see.
Yep, I'm just, right now, I just have to go through this with Mr. Kalogi to amend it on the floor. Uh, we have, uh, also, in the next, um, once again, in the next sentence, it was just changing capitals to lowercase. In the next sent, in the next, in the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas clause, in the last line where it says, uh, after-
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm, go back, where it says, um, uh, the, the third where, whereas clause, it says twenty days there, there from, and it said in apparent reliance upon-
We just changed that. We actually just changed, we changed that back to apparent reliance upon, from apparent compliance with.
Okay.
Change Mr. Kalogi's made. The next whereas clause has no substantive changes, it was just, uh, capital letters changed to lowercase letters, and the next whereas clause does have a change of Mr. Kalogi, I'd like to read into you, uh-
Wait a minute, go back to that fourth paragraph. It says, I don't remember, wait a minute, it says, whereas the initial removal-
That's exactly as it was received, I, I, that one-
Was apparently rescinded and was placed upon administrative leave and directed not to return to work.
That was exactly as received. So, I'm going-
That was the original ver-
That wasn't on the original version.
I am, I, I have the original version.
Okay, that was, I, I don't, okay.
But based in, so, you know, they were-
Let, let Mr. Conlon check.
Okay.
There are numerous edits to this, so, uh, there was-
Be ready.
Let me go back to the original email from Ms. Vaughn. Uh, but once again, I received a copy from Ms. Vaughn, then I received an edit from Mr. Kalogi, then I received multiple edits from the Law Department, so we're going to have to actually narrow that out. And once again, these were all done at four o'clock today, which is sort of, you know, it's, it's coming from too many sources to actually do this, so we're trying to do it on the floor now. So, Mr. Kalogi, i- i- instead of me searching through the email, what would you like the fourth paragraph to say?
I'm sorry, Mr. Conlon, I'm just a little confused. Can you just tell me what the change was in the fourth paragraph?
Yeah, the, the change that I received, and let me go back to the, actually, the original version that I sent out to the public, uh, and just give me a second to pull that up. Uh, the fourth paragraph, one, two, three, four, it said, the original was where as the initial removal of Director Coley was apparently rescinded, she was placed upon administrative leave and not directed to work. So somewhere, there was actually another, that was your paragraph, and they actually sent me something completely different, so I don't know where that came from, but that was the edit that they served to me today. So, uh, would you like to return that fourth paragraph to the original?
Yeah, I don't know what the edit said, but I remember what the original paragraph said. I thought it was, oh, it was accurate.
Okay, so I will, I will actually return that to the resolution one, two, three, four. Can we do that? Okay, so we're good with the fourth paragraph? Let's go to the fifth paragraph. And I actually have the other version now, so we can just switch back and forth between that. Sorry, that's a different document. Here we go. Next paragraph, where the council, whereas, let me just make sure that they gave me the correct, where the City Council determined that there were numerous, okay, so it is the same paragraph. Uh, they changed in the last paragraph, uh, where it says statutory law, they wanted to change that to applicable law. And I'm assuming you would like to keep statutory law.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously statutory is subsumed with unapplicable, but not, uh, applicable is fine, I can look at that.
Okay, uh, and in the next paragraph, let me just check their version versus the original version that was received. Okay, so the next paragraph, we have, uh, okay, this is the one with the, within twenty days. So they wanted the section symbol removed, they wanted the capitals changed to lowercase, and they wanted a period ended, a period entered at the end, and it actually should be, it, it could be a period. So, uh, that's, that's the only change there. Uh, so after council, they just wanted a period, they wanted the section symbol removed, they wanted a comma inserted, uh, and they wanted a, uh, okay, and this is actually where they actually changed the now therefore, uh, so, I'm sorry, the last whereas clause is just style, is just, uh, once again, oh, I'm sorry, in, in the previous where I'd clause, just check this real quick. Okay, they actually had two other changes in the previous whereas clause, and I'm sorry about that, I missed those. Uh, applicable law dictates of due process, and they want, and, and they wanted to insert the word, and where it says and necessary approvals, they wanted to insert the word obtain necessary approvals. And then, and provide adequate reasons, instead of it read it at first, um, dictates of due process and necessary approvals and adequate reasons, they would like it to read and obtain necessary approvals and provide adequate reasons.
Okay, I can look at that, sure.
Very good. Okay, the, now, the now therefor's did change substantially. Uh, you had now therefore be resolved by the City Council of City Trenton pursuant to NJSA section forty, colon, sixty-nine, cap A, dash forty-three C. It hereby disapproves of the aforementioned, uh, purported removal of Director Coley. Uh, they would like that change to now therefore be resolved by the City Council of City Trenton pursuant to, uh, NJSA, uh, forty sixty-nine A. I'd say, actually, change-
Forty sixty-nine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, it says now therefore be resolved by the City Council of City Trenton that, one, the above recitals are incorporated by references set forth at length herein, and, two, pursuant to NJSA forty, colon, sixty-nine A, dash forty-three, dash, uh, subsection C, the council hereby disapproves the purported removal of Director Coley. Uh, and then-
Yeah, and then there's something after that, too.
And, yes, and then be further resolved that based upon this action by council, the mayor's purported removal of Director Coley has no force in effect, be further resolved that this resolution still take effect immediately and pursuant to law.
That's fine.
Okay, so we, and I have the edit on the screen, I save that.
To avoid us having to do this in the future, I'm going to communicate with the city attorney and, uh-
Thank you.
I understand this might have just been done internally, and, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that this doesn't occur where we have to deal with something like this again.
I greatly appreciate that, sir, because it, it's just-
Absolutely, absolutely.
I received those at four fifteen, and it was just a little, so, you know, I wanted to get the Law Department, because they do still have to sign this to form a legality, so that's the change that they wanted made. I brought them up on the floor. Uh, I will now read the final into the record, and Ms. Vaughn, if you want to move this forward, uh, still, or, you know, uh, then, you know, you indicated you'd like to go with what Mr. Kalogi said, so I'll read this into the record. This is resolution twenty-one dash three oh one. June ninth, twenty twenty-one, Mayor Reed Gussiora publicly announced his removal of Police Director Sheila Coley here and after Director Coley, end. Whereas prior to said announcement, Mayor Gussiora failed to comply with the procedural requirements of NJSA forty, colon, sixty-nine A, dash forty-three C, and the city's memorandum of understanding with the State of New Jersey's Department of Community Affairs, end. Whereas the next day, June tenth, twenty twenty-one, the business administrator, not the mayor, sent a notice to Director Coley advising of her removal twenty days therefrom, in apparent reliance on NJSA forty, colon, sixty-nine, cap A, dash forty-three subsection C. End. Whereas the initial removal of Director Coley was apparently rescinded, and she was placed upon administrative leave and directed not to return to work, end. Whereas the City Council has determined that there were numerous flaws, both procedurally and substantively, in the mayor's purported removal of Director Coley, including the failure to follow applicable law, dictates of due process and obtain necessary approvals, and provide adequate reasons, and whereas NJSA forty, colon, sixty-nine, cap A, dash forty-three C, provides that City Council may disapprove of the mayor's removal of the department head within twenty days of the aforementioned notice by adopting a resolution by a two-thirds vote of the whole number of the council. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of City Trenton, that, one, the above recitals are incorporated by references set forth here and, at length herein. Two, pursuant to NJSA, colon, forty, colon, sixty-nine, cap A, S forty-three C, the City Council, the, the council hereby disapproves of the purported removal of Director Coley, be it further resolved that based upon this action by council, the mayor's purported removal of Director Coley is no force in effect, be it further resolved that this resolution still take effect immediately and pursuant to law. Ms. Vaughn, did you want to move this to the floor?
Uh, yeah, uh, yes, um, but I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Council President.
Excuse me, go right ahead.
Um, yes, so before we move, I just want to get clarity from the attorneys, um, will, uh, whether this, uh, passes or fail, um, will we still be granting Ms. Coley an attorney? Uh, Mr. Kalogi?
I was gonna let Mr.-
Well, the city, um, the city, uh, the responsibility to the city to, to a director, um, is that the Law Department represents the, and you could cite the, the statute in the Faulkner Act, that the, that the, the Law Department via the Law Director represents, uh, the mayor, the council, and heads of departments, correct?
Right, but the Law Director has to make a determination whether, I mean, any employee is generally entitled to an attorney if they're being sued, or something along those lines. This is a situation where the person is being, uh, removed, in effect, terminated, and it certainly, you know, begs the question of whether, under these unique circumstances, they're entitled to an attorney. Mr. Bridges, I'm sure will follow the law and do what's required. If they are, they will get one. I don't, I haven't researched the issue, it just came up tonight during the meeting.
Well, yeah, that, and that's, that's my issue right now, since we, it just came up, and we had the hearing, and, and to, to date, she was not giving, and was not assigned any representation from the Law Department, and she was not given proper, um, uh, communication regard, regarding, uh, the Law Department's obligation to her, under the Faulkner Act, her being a head of department. And considering that she has, that, that we have twenty days to make this decision, um, and, uh, and we're still within that window, is it advisable that we move forward here? Should we wait until-
You absolutely-
Wait a minute, well, let me finish my question. Let me finish my question. Is it, is it-
I'm sorry.
Is it, um, is it, uh, are we putting the city at legal risk if we move forward, um, without the Law Department assigning her an attorney?
Number one, at this point, it hasn't been established that she's entitled to an attorney. I'm not taking a position either way, I'm just saying, you know, that would have to be researched. Number two, I don't believe that's going to stop the running of the twenty days. I believe the twenty days is going to run on the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth, and again, if action is not taken by council to override the mayor, I don't know what the voting's going to be, this is the one opportunity council's going to likely get to address this. If there is no vote to override, or if the vote is insufficient to override, you know, the, uh, removal will become effective in all likelihood. So this is the time tonight to address it, there may not be any other time.
So, so, Mr. Bridges, can you-
Can't put it off for today.
So, Mr. Bridges, can you, can you tell us at this moment whether or not, uh, uh, Ms. 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 Coley is, is entitled to an attorney?
Uh, I echo what Mr. Kalogi said, it depends. I have to get more information, I need to understand what the purpose of the attorney is. I can't answer that question in back. That's what I said, uh, when we were in closed session, and that's my, my answer now. I really would need to know the specific as to why, what the purpose, what's the understanding, a- and especially because, uh, uh, I have to look at liability from the city's perspective and determine if, if, if the city and the director are currently, um, on the same page, or if they're directly opposed to each other. I, I need more information, I can't answer that question as stated.
Okay.
Councilwoman Vaughn, are you, um, moving forward?
Yeah, yeah, yes, um, uh, so move.
So moved as amended, ma'am, correct? Ma'am, as amended?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have a motion by council, uh, I'm sorry, by, uh, Councilmember Robin Vaughn, uh, to introduce twenty-one dash three oh one as amended. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second, but Council President McBride. Council President, would you like to call the roll?
Um, yeah, I thought that we open up for discussion.
Yes, you can, you can, you can still have discussion, I didn't know if you were going to roll or not.
I want to open it up for discussion.
Yes, ma'am, I have a roll, I have the roll, uh, motion is second, the floor is definitely open.
President McBride?
Go right ahead, Mr. Blakely.
Thank you, President McBride.
Um you know, this is a very serious uh matter that um we are deliberating uh this evening. Uh I believe uh that the mayor uh was elected to be the mayor. And he is entitled uh to the team uh and the leaders uh that he feel he has confidence in. Uh I have my own personal opinion of Director Coley. However, I believe that her effectiveness is dramatically inhibited or 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 curbed uh due to uh the mayor's lack of confidence in her leadership, which is why he decided uh to uh move to dismiss her. Um I think it would be untenable to keep her uh without her having the confidence of the mayor. Um it's very important that we consider the following items as we uh deliberate on this issue. Number one, uh directors are at-will employees, that is a fact, they do not have just cause protections. And so the very fact that the mayor uh does not have confidence in her is legitimate, that's a complete sentence. And is all of the uh calls that he needs, he doesn't need any calls actually. Um however, the uh MOU states that uh you have to go through DCA to approve um a direct or to remove a director. DCA approved uh the removal uh or the dismissal of Director Coley on June tenth. Uh Director Coley was informed of the mayor's intention of removing her um formally on June tenth as well. And I think it's time for us to move in another direction and look for, you know, we'll consider whoever the mayor uh determines is going to be uh the the director. But the mayor should have his team, I would give this same bit of latitude to anyone who was mayor. Uh because at the end of the day, the buck stops with the chief executive. He is responsible to build a team that he wants and the fact that Director Coley uh no longer has his confidence enough for. I I will say uh that I will be um I'm really interested in seeing who the next uh director will be. And uh there's no guarantee that I will support whoever the next director is. But I do believe that the uh resolution or that the dismissal um was lawful, was proper and uh is uh is 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 his prerogative as the mayor. And I just, I couldn't imagine keeping a police director who the mayor no longer wants. Particularly because this form of government allows him to remove a a director um at will. And so for those reasons, I will be voting against this and I look forward to uh seeing you know who the next appointment will be, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Colwell Wilson. Councilwoman Colwell Wilson.
Yeah, this this is not about whether or not that I support or don't support.
Speak up, councilwoman.
I am speaking up. This is, this is about what, this is not about how I feel about Director Coley. Um whether I I want her there or whether I don't. This 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 uh resolution is about procedure. However, it is the mayor's prerogative to hire and fire at will. And he needs to start following procedures. Now, they corrected the procedures because they initially went to her to fire on the nineteenth. DCA hadn't even signed off on it until the twentieth. Council didn't get notice of it until the twentieth. And so that procedure was wrong, the first procedure was wrong, the second procedure, they followed the line of the law. And and since it's the mayor's prerogative and I don't know how Director Coley can come back and work with a mayor who doesn't want to work with her. I just, I just think that we need to send a message loud and clear to Mayor Gussiora and his administration that they have got to stop skipping the steps and they have to follow the rule of the law. If you want support of this council, you have to follow the rule of the law. That's all I have to say and I I will be voting no on this, thank you.
Is there anyone else, Councilman Mouchao? Councilman Harrison? Councilman Rodriguez?
Uh yes, uh I concur with uh Councilwoman Marsh Cardworth's statement. You know, the process, at the beginning, we we did pass and I voted in favor of a resolution saying that the process was not done right, the process was not right, but it was rectified and directors are under the prerogative of the mayor. It's up to him to hire or fire. If it would have been that us as city council were doing the firing, that's a different case, completely different. We have to afford her all the rights, but that was right now this case between her and the mayor. He could do whatever he feels, but I I believe that you know, the, you know, I cannot be supporting bringing her back with this resolution.
Um uh Councilman uh Mouchao? Councilman Harrison?
Council president?
Yes.
Right, it's like we said, the uh it's the mayor's choice. He has uh didn't have confidence in uh Director Coley, he's looking to move forward. Um like I said, at the end of the day, uh people are saying what the procedure wasn't followed. I beg or differ, um but at the end of the day, I think we need to look forward and uh look for the next county to represent the city Trenton, to help the police department, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Mouchao?
I'll be voting, I'll be voting no, just on attitude, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, so um the um only thing that I have to add is this.
If the procedure had been. Council president, you skipped me, you skipped me.
I apologize, I thought you opened up. Uh go right ahead, councilwoman.
So I was the councilwoman who raised the the flag um to the fact that the mayor did not follow procedure. The mayor did not make corrective action because he um out of his own voluntarily. So it was not a a a mistake. It was intentional. And the only reason why he made corrective action is because one council member, and that was I, who called him out on his egregious violation of the law. He moved to terminate a director who happens to be a woman, who happens to be black and happens to be the first African-American woman to lead a big uh of the the police department here in the city of Trenton. And that's a historic nature. And for a black woman to be successful in that capacity at a time when uh in an environment where discrimination of folks of those attributes have been you know, a constant. And for this particular person to come into the city and try to change that. And because she tried to change it, this is the backlash and this is the um the attempt to undermine and to uh and to roll the clock back and to sustain the status quo that has always been in the Trenton Police Department because certain individuals who happen to be white do not want change. So if we want to continue as a council, as diverse as we are, want to implement the laws that we just passed, that the state legislature is trying to put forth, the 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 to get black citizens to be treated with equity and equality in police and law enforcement. It has to come from the law enforcement agency. So when you put people there who are diverse, or you want to keep the status quo, who resist change? And we all know what it is. We all know why Ms. Coley is being forced out. The mayor has not even bothered to say the reason why, the cause. And every single council member seems to think that's okay. But every single white male that we have put forward or or had an issue with, there's no, it just, you give them the benefit of the doubt, there's no question. There's uh they go unchallenged and unchecked, and the mayor is an example of that. So if we're talking about enforcing the law, Councilman Blakely, when we're talking about a a will of the council to have police department reform, to have black people not to be choked out and killed by white police officers, a mayor who refused to support a the first black African-American female to change that dynamic in in the police department, the police department reform, he has officers over there that have serious discipline records and he maintains their employment. But yet he's gonna fire a police director who has done what we hear tonight, none of us can say that she didn't anything wrong except for the fact that he wants to go in another direction. Another direction where? He wants to go another direction backwards. He's never gonna enforce those laws in 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 any event that they're enacted on the state legislature in the city of Trenton. You think the white captains there, who he's gonna put in her place, are gonna enact those laws and enforce them in our community, in the Trenton Police Department and on the streets of Trenton? No, because Mayor Gussior fired Sheila Coley with no cause, with no reason. But yet he overrode, he overrode a a a a a judge, a federal judge, chief federal judge and a prosecutor and rehired a Brady cop in the Trenton Police Department. And this council has said nothing about that, nothing that we have, that this mayor, a white man, put protected another white man who was deemed a Brady cop, who we are, we we just approved laws of resolu- three resolutions that's supposed to protect us from those type individuals, the 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 David or Dillies of the world who go and lie on affidavit and this council has said nothing about that. But y'all want to get rid of Sheila Coley and y'all want to support the mayor on that. It is outrageous. And every single one of us should be ashamed of yourselves. And then he doesn't even think that she deserves due process. Oh, nobody thinks black people deserve due process. But I would have thought that my council members would have ensured that at least voted for this, get the mayor to do the right thing, put her back in her job, continue to do the work, because he can't find anything that she's done wrong. You look at his comments in the press, he said she's done everything, she diversified the police department, she brought technology to the police department, she's done job, she done her, she job, she she's done her duty well. But he wants to move in a different direction, we think that's good enough. But you and but you don't challenge a white man who was deemed a Brady cop who lies on search warrant affidavits on 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 young black men and put them behind bars and 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 you put them back on the street with with the uh the taxpayers' dollars. It's outrageous. We got a director calls us niggers and it's and sexually harass women and you and you say nothing about that. This mayor has has run roughshod around this city, has run roughshod around this council, has has been lawless in every at every turn. We I can I can go down the list, but this one, the people of this city who look like me, who are black, who are women, will remember this. And every and every person on this council who did nothing and remained silent in this lynching of a first African-American black woman in the city of Trenton. And 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 in our nation at this most critical time in our history, as we trying to turn the corner on on police brutality and um and and abuse and and excessive force and police department reform. We're not gonna get the police department reform unless you put a black person in leadership. None of those white captains in there who's been there for thirty years are gonna change the trajectory of that police department. We're gonna turn the clock back, they're gonna get in there and turn everything back. Everything that she put, uh every single new process, every piece of new technology she put in there. She's more qualified than any of those police officers there to run that police department. Ma- Mayor Gussior could not have put a better person in that department. That, the appointment of Sheila Coley should have been Mayor Reed Gussior's most 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 accomplished uh um um initia- uh uh most accomplished uh uh appointment in his in in his term. And he should have supported her and made it successful. But even then, he made that a failure. So so that's all I have to say about about that, I am just totally appalled at each and every council member here, you should be ashamed of ourselves and 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 if he usurp you on this, he's gonna usurp you on every single thing thereafter. You and and that's what I got to say about that and we all should be ashamed of ourselves that we support this nonsense.
Thank you, councilwoman. Um we um moving forward, I I just wanted to um say a few things in reference to this uh resolution. Uh we all have stated, uh most of us have stated the procedural uh part of this that was not done correctly. So let me just be clear on a couple things. First of all, the mayor does have the prerogative to put in that seat who he chooses. That is the first thing, that is very clear. The second thing is that we need to be clear on is the rules and the regulations of how he dismissed them. The the charter says that he has to give the council a written notice and show cause. And the MOU states that he must get approval from the DCA Department of Community Affairs before moving forward. And the charter also says that she's entitled to be heard. Well, on June the ninth, the council heard it from the Trentonian. It was never given to us in writing on June the ninth. She was served with the letter that said that she was terminated effective immediately. And the sad part about it is that she was given that letter in the company of the corporate attorney. So how can a corporate attorney that should be representing the directors, the mayor, the council and the people move forward with that procedure knowing that it was flawed? There's a lot of things that went wrong here. I do believe that the mayor has the choice of who he wants to lead that department. But what I don't believe is that he usurps the council in order to do it. The council fired Morelli five to two. The mayor has spent over a half a million dollars fighting for Morelli in court. Over five hundred thousand fighting for Morelli in court when the council, five to two, voted to relieve him for cause. And we followed all of the guidelines. If the mayor had have followed the guidelines, we wouldn't be here today. But he continued to usurp this council. He continues to cost this city millions of dollars because at the end of the day, this is another lawsuit waiting to happen because procedurally it was done wrong. Oh, I don't know whether we'll win or lose, but the money that is gonna be spent in between then is what counts. And then our taxpayers have to foot the bill. And where's he going, back to Princeton when all of this is said and done? We need to be very careful about how we move forward. And you cannot keep violating the procedures and think that it's okay costing the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars on your way. And so with that being said, I know that we cannot undo what has been done. But for the very near future, we need to think hard where we violate procedures. when we violate procedures and when the corporate attorneys allow them to violate procedure. This cannot continue to happen. If he had've followed the procedures, we would not be having this conversation right now. And I cannot say bring her back because he has the opportunity to hire who he want. But I can say that he did not follow procedure when he terminated Ms. Coley on June the 9th, effective immediately. And Mr. Collin, we can move on to the vote. Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am. I was just finishing my notes on your statements, ma'am. I'm almost done. Now I am. Uh, I have an introduction by Ms. Vaughn. As amended, I have a second by Council President McBride. I'm not calling the roll. Mr. Blakely. Mr. Blakely, sorry, there was no, sir?
Yeah, no.
Uh, Council Vice President Colwell Wilson?
No.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
No.
The, the nays have it. By a count of 1 to 6, the resolution fails. Uh, Council President, would you like me to proceed? We have a walk-on tonight. Would you like me to proceed to the walk-on now? Would you like me to?
Mr. Collin, Mr. Collin, point of order. You said the nays have it, this passes?
It did not. The nays have it, in other words, it failed. It did not pass.
Okay, thank you.
It was, if the ayes had it, the nays had it, so it failed by a vote of 1 to 6.
Uh, Mr. Collin?
Yes, ma'am.
When that gets signed by the appropriate parties, can you ensure that you give me the recorded vote?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you.
Uh, Council Vice President, uh, sorry, Council President, we have a walk-on resolution. Uh, this is 21-304. Did you want to proceed to the walk-on? 4 for the record is the number. I'm gonna place it up on the screen. And I'll read it into the record and then I'll seek a second. Uh, this is, ladies and gentlemen, I already have a second. This is introduced by Council President McBride. Uh, a second by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson. I'll read it into the record.
Please place it on the screen, please.
I am working on that and I'm almost there. And I'm gonna read it into the record at the same.
Zoom in, so I can read.
Will do. Hold on, I still gotta get it up. There we go. So I'll zoom in to get as much on the screen as possible and I'll scroll when I get down to the list now there for us. Uh, this, ladies and gentlemen, this is Resolution 21-304. This is a resolution urging the mayor to engage a fiscal monitor for the city's distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Whereas in March 11, 2021, President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, which provides financial support to state, local, and tribal governments in addressing disastrous effects of the COVID-19 pandemic on their communities. And whereas the city of Trenton has been allocated approximately $73 million in funding through the state and local fiscal recovery program SLF RP under said plan and has received its first tranche of funding in the amount of $36,456,999. Whereas regulations imposed by the United States Department of Treasury and its interim final rule effective May 27, 2021 contemplate transparency and accountability in the expenditure of said funds. And whereas said regulations are highly complex and detailed and must be scrupulously followed in all respects, including the dispersment and record-keeping relating to said funds. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Trenton, I'm sorry, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Trenton that close monitoring of all aspects of the above program be conducted by an outside fiscal monitor to ensure full compliance, transparency, and appropriate distribution of funds to city programs and residents. And whereas pursuant to the provisions of the Faulkner Act governing the city of Trenton and JSA 40:69-A-40G, the mayor has the exclusive power to negotiate contracts with the city subject to council's approval, including engagement of professional services contract for such monitoring services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Trenton that the above recitals are incorporated by references set forth at length herein. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the city of Trenton that Mayor Reed Gussie Orr be and is hereby urged to immediately present counsel with a contract engaging an appropriate firm to serve as fiscal monitor as to all aspects of the above program for the purposes and benefit of the citizenry as herein above expressed. And be it further resolved that a duly executed copy of this resolution be forwarded to the mayor by the city clerk immediately following its passage. And be it further resolved that this Resolution 21-304 shall take effect immediately and according to law. I have a motion by Council President McBride and seconded by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson. The floor is open.
Uh, Council President?
Yes. Councilwoman Vaughn.
You know, I look at this resolution and here we are talking about another monitor. More oversight in the city of Trenton. So is this a requirement from the US Treasury? Each municipality have a monitor? Is this something that we're voluntarily doing?
Well, in the American Rescue Plan, it says that you have to have someone in place to monitor the, and record the spending and the fact that they can claw this back if one red cent is spent inappropriately or without explanation of the benefit of the city and the citizens. So it is very important and new rules will come down because in the interim rule, it said that they will be passing down more laws. And so because we don't have anyone in the city of Trenton that I know of, but Mr. Zelensky, it is my belief that this would be the best thing.
My position is this. My position is this. I understand our council. We are the oversight. So I'm not gonna vote for this because a fiscal monitor is not gonna take my powers to provide oversight and check Mayor Gussie Orr. We have, as a council, has allowed the mayor again to usurp us time and time again. So here we are. We're gonna bring in a third party, spend a portion of our funds in professional fee to have this oversight. I, my contention is the oversight is the obligation. We have the fiduciary responsibility. And you cite it very well and wanted to wear ass claws that pursuant to the provisions of the Faulkner Act governing the city of Trenton, the mayor has the power to negotiate contracts and is subject to council's approval. So anytime that he goes out and try to spend this money, he better get his ass into this council. And if this council continue to allow him to do that and we don't have any accountability for him, then shame on us. So what I would say is if he doesn't get us a plan here and we should have a resolution unanimous, what the resolution that should've been written was a resolution to, for a plan that he should produce, introduce his plan to this council and the council by resolution and will wants to accept that plan or reject it or make amendments to it. Right? The mayor's always saying that we don't legislate, right? We don't know how to legislate. Well, mayor, give us your plan. Introduce it as a resolution as you did with the CARES Act. Tell us what you're planning on, how you're gonna allocate that money, where you're gonna spend it. And then the council gets to review it for approval. He has not, residents of this city, 157 people that are on this line, the mayor has not introduced his plan to council yet for our approval. And that's the resolution that we should be passing tonight. We are, we get the last say of what this mayor should do. And stop giving our powers away. So when he puts something on his docket and tells us that we have to approve it, vote it down. Vote it down, Council President. You don't have to pull it. Put it, let, put it up. Vote it up and vote it down. We need to stop voting yes, yes, yes like we're puppets, like we're rubber stamps for the mayor and his incompetence. We are the fiduciary. We don't need oversight. We don't need oversight from DCA, from the state. We don't need oversight from another fiscal monitor. We are the oversight. Have confidence in ourselves to be able to provide that approval. Get the mayor to put his plan on paper. Pen to paper. Put it, pen to paper. Put it in, introduce it in a resolution. Get it here next council meeting so we can review it and vote it up or vote it down, amend it, check it, whatever. That's what needs to be done, Council President. And that's what I would like to see.
All right, thank you, Council.
The oversight, we got, that's our obligation. That's our job. That's our fiduciary responsibility.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Thank you.
Um, I, I.
Our Council President? Council President, can I speak on this?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, last night, we had a meeting online about the American Rescue Act. A name came up, Michael DiLoreto. Right? Most of my colleagues were on that meeting last night and they heard about the plan and how we're trying to engage the community. But some of you guys are just grandstanding because you think it's gonna help you win the mayor's race. Not gonna help you. Not gonna help you. Not today, not tomorrow, not ever. Just remember that. At the end of the day, you were on that call last night. People heard something, you chuckling, laughing, making stuff up. You were on the call and the people were telling their point of views and the mayor was giving his point of view. But, 'cause I remembered the name, Michael DiLoreto. But again, we're trying to make up stories again. That's what this council's good at, telling stories. But you're not telling the truth 'cause you think it's gonna help you win an election. But it's not. Good luck with that. People don't like people who don't tell the truth. And at the end of the day, there was at least 50 people on that call last night. The American Rescue Act, the call. But you were on there. Most of the council was on there. But now all of a sudden, we forget about a plan. Unbelievable. You're hypocrites. I can't believe it. Embarrassed. Good luck with that.
President McBride?
Go right ahead, Councilman Blakely.
Uh, quite frankly, a fiscal monitor is superfluous. We have a division of, you know, the finance division. We have accountants who work for the city. Um, we have controls over the city. Um, the city budget is, you know, more than a quarter of a billion dollars. And quite frankly, I think that this is a stunt. I think that this is a, just a stunt, another stunt where people wanna serve as an obstructionist. Uh, quite frankly, people wanna be mayor. They should run. They should really, really run. And if people wanna be city council people, they should run as well. But they should stop playing politics as we're seeking to govern. 2022 will be here before you know it and people can share their vision for the city of Trenton and share it with voters. But stop, you know, uh, you know, trying to impede progress and grandstand and, you know, do things of that nature. So I think a fiscal monitor is completely superfluous. We have entire divisions. We have staff who can help us monitor this money. And, you know, I find it fascinating. I mean, I actually agree with Councilwoman Vaughn. Uh, quite frankly, you know, we're the body who should be monitoring the expenditure of these funds. And that's what we're paid to do. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
All right, so let me.
Councilwoman?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Colwell Wilson.
Yeah, I mean, I think what my colleagues have to understand is these federal grants are hefty and they require a lot of reporting, a lot of follow-up, a lot of accountability. Our staff, we're short of staff as it is in the fiscal department. You're putting an additional burden on them. The American Rescue Act permits the mayor to use funds to hire professionals to help them monitor and follow up with the reports on these grants. And yet, my colleagues are saying that, oh, we'll let Mr. Zelensky do it, our finance department do it. They are overburdened as it is. So I don't think this is such a bad idea. This is not about trying to take the mayor's job away from him. We just wanna make sure that we use those funds in an appropriate way that's recommended through the American Rescue Act. Thank you.
So thank you. Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
I am gonna vote yes to this resolution because we need $73 million. If we don't do this, these monies are gonna go all over the place, to the wrong places. So we have to monitor what's going on. That was recommended by the American Rescue Plan recommends that an accounting auditing company or an accounting company be monitoring it. That is a recommendation, so I am gonna vote for it. We have to because during the budget terms, We have to, because during the budget terms, we are struggling with that budget, with all those numbers. I remember the Councilman Blakely say, oh, but those are numbers, a bunch of numbers there. Because we don't, we've never had a financial officer with us going over every line before we voted for that, uh, for that budget. So I definitely agree, it's seventy-three million dollars. Uh, we, we definitely need somebody to oversee that.
So, so, thank you, Councilmen. So let me just be clear. When you have, uh, seventy-three million dollars, and we already have, uh, a budget that is pushed to us that most of us don't understand, reports that have to be written, every time that there's money given out under this American Rescue Plan, there are certain reports that have to go with it, attached to the federal government. The council is not here to write reports on the money, on the expenditures. The council is only here to vote on the expenditures. A fiscal monitor for this particular, uh, uh, pool of money is just to keep track of this money, to write the necessary reports and make sure that we are in line with the American Rescue Plan. In the American Rescue Plan, they advise us, they advise the municipalities to get someone and that could take possession of the, uh, reports, tracking the expenditures, so that we will not have to go back later and say, hey, we need to get an audit here to rectify what should have been done from the beginning. This is what this is about. It's not about, uh, relinquishing your powers, because you're not gonna be writing the reports. You're not going to be, uh, making sure that all of the, uh, rules apply to how the money is distributed. You're only going to be voting on the money and the expenditures that they put in front of you. So we do need someone. We don't have anyone, Mr. Zelinski's last day might be the thirtieth of June. So we need someone in there that can actually track this money, write the reports, and keep up with the expenditures and the rules that the Treasury Department puts out for this money. And that's all it's saying, it's not, you, uh, taking any powers from the council, and it's not taking anything from the mayor. It is adding the staff that the American Rescue Plan say that we can add to make sure that we get this right. I'd rather get it right than to have to backtrack.
President McBride?
No, 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 we're gonna move forward with the vote. Uh, Mr. Collins, just call the vote.
Yes, ma'am. I have an introduction of Council President McBride, a second by Council Vice President Colwell-Wilson, and now call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
I would actually say that your point made a lot of sense, and I'll be voting yes based on the explanation that you made. I think it's very reasonable what you said, so, yes.
Mr. Blakely votes aye, Ms. Colwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Harrison votes no, Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Michelle votes no, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes yes, Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Vaughn votes no, Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution passed by a vote of four to three, the motion carries. Council President McBride, would you like me to move the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we have a consent agenda tonight. I'm gonna move it, uh, it has been moved by Council Vice President Colwell-Wilson. I'm gonna read it into the record, though, for the numbers. Uh, the numbers for the consent agenda. Just bear with me for one second, there's a lot of papers going around, and I have my docket somewhere here. Hold on one second, please. There it is. Uh, the consent agenda numbers are for Resolutions three oh two six one, two six one, two six two, two seven one, two seven three, two seven nine, two eight four, two eight five, two eight seven, two eight eight, two eight nine, two ninety, two ninety one, two ninety four, two ninety seven, two forty seven, two forty nine, two ninety eight. I have a motion by Council Vice President Colwell-Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice Pres, by Council President McBride. Um, just, uh, just real quick, does anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, I do.
Ma'am?
I want the, uh, the skate park removed from the agenda. I want that roll called, um, at the, 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 uh, uh, Amptico?
Hold on a second, ma'am?
Square?
Yep, let me just get the number for the record. Okay, so that's Resolution number two, uh, twenty-one dash two forty-nine, is being removed from the consent agenda and moved to roll call.
Indeed.
Note that to the record. Moved to roll consent. Council President, would you like me to call the roll for the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Uh, for the consent agenda, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Consent agenda carries. Uh, Council President, would you like me to see down the docket?
Yes, please.
Okay, just bear with me. Next, we have Resolutions from the Department of Administration, Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash two twenty-three, Resolution Awarding Contract to Affair in Open Process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four cap eight twenty-point-four at Sec to Millennium Strategies LLC for, for professional consult consulting services in grant writing for a period of one year from March first, twenty twenty-one to February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars and five thousand dollars per month through RFP twenty twenty-one dash zero three. This is Resolution two twenty-three, do I have a motion?
Go move.
I have a motion by Ms. Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second. Uh, Mr. Mr. Collins, can you move the, uh, resolution from the screen?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Vaughn, a second by Mr. Blakely, the floor is open.
Yes, um, I had, Council President?
Go right ahead.
I had asked for this to be roll call, because I had concerns about, number one, um, the, the location of the contractor, which is in Morris County. Um, and, uh, and secondly, um, I did receive from the administration, always in the eleventh hour, not enough time for the council to even review, um, sending, uh, requested supporting information an hour before the council meeting, when you had all day Wednesday and all, you know, morning on Thursday to get the information to us. And you send it at three and four thirty, and Council President, again, the council does not push back on the administration at all in that respect, and they expect us to vote on stuff, right? Again, I will not, I will not be approving any, uh, legislation, resolutions, or contracts that when I ask for information from the Law Department, from Finance, or the Water Department, and they don't get it to me, this, I'll be, by, by close of business Wednesday and time for me to review it, but for the Thursday evening council meeting, I will be voting no. And I would appreciate if my council leadership, uh, would support the council on that. And, uh, if, if the data is not, and the information not sufficient, the Council President should move to, to take, we should table it and put it off the docket. Because getting information at four thirty is unacceptable. So, and it's gonna be a resolution that we're about to approve, uh, that, and this is one of them. And there's another one, but from the Law Department, that I got invoices at four thirty. So I did not have a chance to review it, and we're gonna be voting on that, Council President? So show some support for your council members. Uh, this, I got this information, uh, that, uh, a list of, it was a spreadsheet, a document, that outlined all the, all the, uh, the grants supposedly this grant writer wrote. But in reading that document, um, and was able to get acceptance of six million dollars worth of grant funding, at the, the, the analysis, the report came from Nikki Mosgrove, though. So I wanna know, was it Nikki Mosgrove, Mo- Mosgrove, who did the work? Or was it the contracting firm? Because that report came from Nikki, and the report said that the grant writing company here only assisted Nikki, Miss Mo, Miss Mosgrove. Now, I, I don't know Miss Mosgrove personally, but I know her capabilities. And, and I would be hard pressed to believe that the grant writer, this contractor, is doing a better job than, than Miss Mosgrove. I would believe that Miss Mosgrove was, gets credit for, uh, a large part of, of being able to get six million dollars worth of grants approved and bought into the city. Now, so Mr. Cruz, can you confirm that that document was, that was from Miss Mosgrove, it wasn't from the grant writer? What percentage of the effort, who led that, who led those efforts?
Madam President, may I answer?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, um, we didn't get that information, it only went to you. Um, Mr. Cruz, you may answer it.
Uh, yes.
Share that with the entire council.
So, uh, Madam President, the information was actually sent to the clerk's office at eleven o'clock this morning, not four thirty. I'm not sure why it was sent to, uh, to council members at four thirty this afternoon. It did go this morning at eleven. Um, as far as,
I'm sorry.
As far as the, as far as the document that is in front of you regarding how many contracts, uh, this, um, um, grant writer has successfully, uh, uh, gotten for the city, the document was put together by Nikki Mosgrove, because Nikki actually is the one that monitors, uh, and oversees the contract. So she works with Millennium. Uh, Nikki is not the one writing the, uh, the, the grants. She works with them, and then she manages to ensure that somebody has oversight of all of the, all of the grants uh, that the city receives. In the past, the city had actually lost the City VG funding, because there was not enough oversight on grants that the city was receiving, and the city was punished by not receiving City VG grants for, I believe, for three or four years. Uh, we fixed that, and we have monitors in place. Nikki Mosgrove is, is one of them, she's doing an amazing job. And Millennium is actually the, the company that is actually doing the grant writing for the city. Thank you, Madam President.
Uh, Council President, um, I don't have any more questions, but I just will make a statement. Before Millennium came on board, Nikki Mosgrove had been grant writing forever. And, um, and so I don't believe anything Mr. Cruz just said. I believe that this company, we need to put this back out to bid, so that he can get somebody locally, or, or in, in Trenton, from Trenton, or within our contiguous borders, in Mercer County. No way this should go all the way up to Morris County, get the hell out of here. Thank you, Council President.
Uh, Mr. Con, Mr. Collins, could you move on with the vote, please?
As Council President, I just want to note that it did actually come in at eleven, and it was not sent out by an oversight. Got a lot of stuff today, you know, so it was, it was a very busy day.
Mr. Collins, let's move forward, please.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this is Resolution twenty-one dash two twenty-three. Uh, introduced by Ms. Vaughn, second by Mr. Blakely, I'd like to call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Vaughn votes no, Council President McBride?
Yes.
Council President McBride, resolution passed by a vote of six to one. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash two sixty-four, Resolution Authorizing Contract to She International Corp. For the purchase of cloud-based management platform and maintenance through New Jersey State Contract Number N dash zero zero three, eight nine eight five one, for a period of one year from May fifteen, twenty twenty-one, to May fourteen, twenty twenty-two, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighteen thousand six, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. I believe this is for the GovPilot platform.
Go move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second?
Second. Uh, Mr. 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 Collins, can I ask the question? The GovPilot is what you use for your program, um, to get the, uh, Oprah's out, is that that?
Yes, ma'am, it's, it's one, it's one, I'm one of the departments that uses the program. Uh, this does a lot, and I believe it runs our code enforcement, our permits, uh, our GIS overmapping, our zoning overmapping, our Oprah, and I believe there's a couple other systems actually that are in there as well. Mr. Cruz can give you the other systems.
Okay, no, 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 I just, I, I, I don't need.
Yes, Oprah is one of the components, ma'am, yes.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, you can move to the vote.
Uh, I have an introduction from Mr. Harrison, second by Ms. Colwell-Wilson, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, who wrote, who wrote for this?
I can't recall off the top of my head, but this, it was called for roll call.
Uh, yes.
And Council President McBride?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. And next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash two sixty-five. A Resolution Awarding Contract to Affair in Open Process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four cap eight, there's twenty-point-four at Sec to Mark Gialla for telecommunication services, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a period of one year from June eleventh, twenty twenty-one, June ten, twenty twenty-two, through RFP twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
I have a motion by Ms. Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell-Wilson, floor is open.
Uh, Council President?
Could you put that, could you put that on the screen, cuz I, I don't see that.
Just give me, just give me one second, I'm gonna have to grab the packet.
Two sixty-five. I'm standing while my papers are out of order.
Just bear with me, I'm almost there, just gonna find it in the packet.
I don't understand why it's not in my, um, packet.
There you go, ma'am, it's on the screen now. This is for Mark Gialla, it was actually, it was extensive discussion on Tuesday about this.
Yes, so, um, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead. Uh huh, this is the radio room?
Uh, no.
No, ma'am.
This is, um, um, my question, and I wrote for this, because I see this as a repetitive issue throughout our, our procurement process, that we constantly give the same contractor the, the bid. We select the same one. Um, again, uh, I didn't get, I asked Mr., uh, Cruz, the Business Administrator, to send me the bids, I didn't get this particular information.
On Tuesday, it was announced that there was only one bid, Mr. Gialla was the only bidder.
Correct.
So, um, and, and, uh, but then I wanted to see the RFP and the language that's being, uh, put out. I didn't get that either. And I'm not gonna hold the vote up on this, but I just want my concern to be recognized by the Procurement Department and Business Administrator Cruz, and that's as I'm putting Business Administrator Cruz on notice, that every time I see the same vendor getting the contract, year after year after year, he has the Business Administrator and the Procurement Department reporting into him. That should be a red flag. And I can tell you, that disadvantages the city of Trenton. So that's not, that's not in our interest to give a contract to the same vendor every year. So we should make certain that we are, uh, revising the language, uh, uh, making sure, I know one of our residents complained about it, or, or provided us some guidance around how we need to reach out to the community and get information out to folks about different, uh, projects and services the city is procuring. So it seems to me, and I know for a fact, in some cases, uh, some city employees are known to call certain vendors time and time again. So there's a pattern here, it makes no sense for a vendor. And if it's happening, the Business Administrator needs to step in and see how he can rectify that issue. Because if Mark Gialla comes up here again next year, and I will still be in office next year, I will have a serious issue with that. And I, and I have a list of other vendors that I know, and actually, I'm gonna send those to you, Mr. Cruz. The, the names of the vendors that I've seen that have been repetitive, and that there has been, um, they have gotten a contract over and over again. And, 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 you know, as simple as terms, you know, you can't have monopoly on the job, you can't have a monopoly on, on the project. It, 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 it disadvantages our city when one vendor gets the contract all the time, or one, or one, uh, uh, nonprofit gets the grant money all the time. Right? So there's no reason for those individuals, contracts, and nonprofit companies to turn any, to deliver any services, because, or deliver a project. Because they know they're gonna get the grant money time and time again, they know they're gonna get the contract time and time again. So there's no reason to provide a good service to the city. It's only through competition, which is the reason why we do have contract law. It's only through competition that we get quality service, that we get quality projects, uh, we get quality delivery, quality implementations, right? So now I did ask Mr. Klose to come in, the contract law, Mr. Klose, did you get that, did you do it? Mr. Klose?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, did you, did you, um, can you tell us the process? I asked that you go, uh, review New Jersey contract law around the criteria, the selection criteria?
I sent you a legal opinion this morning on it being emailed, the entire council.
Oh, I didn't see that one, you sent a lot of legal opinions this morning, Mr. Klose, you were very busy.
I will check on it right now. Three cents.
Pardon me?
Uh, no, I said I'll look at, I'm looking at my, uh, computer right now, I'll make sure it was three cents, but, uh, it was sent this morning.
Okay, no, okay, no problem. Um, we can go over, uh, a- again, uh, next council meeting, I'm not gonna hold up the council meeting for that. But I, I know what it says, but I, some of my questions are rhetorical, and just want education to the public, because, um, you know, the administration always misinforms, they always misinform, and, and, and straight out lie. Okay? So I need the, the law as to how, uh, contracts and how con, uh, uh, um, uh, vendors are, are procured and selected, and it's not just one qua, one, one, uh, criteria of the lowest bidder. It's just the lowest bidder, that's the easy, that's the easy way to bid with. That's the easy way to bid with.
Uh, Wednesday at twelve seventeen PM, I'll resend it to you right now.
Okay, no, no problem. Um, so Council President, you know, so we gotta stop the bid reading in the city of Trenton. Um, so it's not just the lowest bidder. Okay? So don't call up your friends and tell them, you know, bid X, Y, and Z, cuz you're, you're sure to get the project. So, Council President, I yield my time, thank you.
Council President? Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cruz? Regarding this resolution, how, how many people applied, just him, correct?
One, one, uh, company, uh, uh, Madam President, I'm sorry, can I answer the question?
Yes, go right ahead, Council.
Uh, yes, Madam President, only one person, uh, submitted a proposal. However, the city always follows local public contract law. Uh, we don't hide how the process works. The, it is advertised as required by the state statute, and I am sure Mr. Klose, if he reviews this contract and how it was being, I actually challenge Mr. Klose to actually take a look at this contract and see if the city violated the law the way it was advertised. I challenge Mr. Klose tonight, and please make it public at the next meeting. I would appreciate it, rather than sending a letter to council, that if he can come forward and, and, and actually, uh, state it on the record for the public to hear. We don't play games, and if you think that we are, go to the FBI, go to the prosecutor's office, go to anybody that you wish. But we follow.
Get your wife out of the Water Department, shut up. We already know.
No, no, no. Calm down.
Order, order.
Shut up, Tom.
I said it, get your wife out of the Water Department. I said it, get your wife out of the water department.
Shut up, Tom. I don't ever shut up.
Mute her.
Mute her, Mr. Cal.
Mute her.
Jack.
You got something coming, Councilwoman.
Mr. Cruz.
You, Joe Harrison too.
I, I'm talking to Mr. Cruz.
I'll wait on you, Mr. Cruz, I've been waiting.
Listen, listen, point of order.
Council President, I had a question.
Now, 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 Mr. Cruz had the floor. Mr. Cruz, are you, are you finished your statement?
Uh, yes, Madam President, I am, thank you.
All righty, so now we're.
I, I was gonna finish with my question.
All right.
I got interrupted by one of my colleagues again. I was trying to ask the.
Interruption.
I interrupted.
Go ahead, Mr. Harrison.
Okay, my question is, um, Mr. Cruz, is this the same company that's been there for the last couple of years? Have they, you said there's only one company applied. Did they apply last year?
He's muted.
Uh, yes, uh, they always do, but we cannot control who submits proposals.
Right, so if we only have one proposal, there's no rigging going on. It's open to everybody, everybody can apply, but if only one applies, how's that rigging? That doesn't make sense.
You have to, he's disrespectful to Councilwoman.
No, 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 please, room, uh.
Who's talking? Did I first line up?
Wait, listen.
Don't worry, I can defend myself.
Locked out of this meeting if you interrupt on this, uh, council meeting again.
I can defend myself, don't worry. Ha, ha, rough asses.
Councilwoman Vaughn, you can't.
Guess Council President McBride, guess Council President McBride.
Your language, come on.
She can't control herself.
The quorum, the quorum with the language. All right, Mr. Harrison.
Repeat, repeat.
Councilman Harrison, are you finished with your questions?
Yes, let's take the vote, thank you.
All right, there's no more questions. Mr. Colin, can we move forward?
Yes, ma'am, I'm instructed by Ms. Vaughn, a second by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson, Mr. Blakeley.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
So. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash six, two sixty-six, a resolution authorizing appropriation of one hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one to provide premium hazard pay to eligible employees of the Trenton Free Public Library.
So.
My motion, Mr. Harrison. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Michelle.
Um, the floor is open.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, so, um, let me, um, let me ask the question. Um, because I, I'm a little perplexed about what is taking place here because, uh, the mayor knows and everyone should have at least tried to, uh, browse through the American Rescue Act. So, in the American Rescue Q Act, they said, uh, uh, essential workers. So, I don't, I never received anything from the administration telling me who the essential workers are and what portion of the funding they will get because before we start divvying out monies, that portion has to be addressed, who the essential workers are. So, um, if you're going straight across the board for all city employees, that in itself is a violation of the American Rescue Act money. So, that's one, one, uh, thing I wanted to ask about. We never got a breakdown of essent, uh, essential of employees. Then the second thing that I wanted to ask is, yesterday was the first public meeting, and the mayor had to be forced to have that public meeting based on the fact that we just kept saying to him, you have to go to the public under the American Rescue Plan. They said, oh, no, 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 that's just suggested. No, when the Treasury Department put it in black and white, they mean it. So, my other question is, we don't have a breakdown of who the essential, essential employees are. The mayor only had one public meeting, and now he wants to disperse the funding, and there's no concrete plan. There was just, the mayor kept reiterating last night that that plan was just there. It could be changed, we will change it, so we should have a plan. Second of, the third piece of it is, where, where, where's the union contract at? I see that Edmund Johnson brought forth the supervisor's contract, but I don't see the contract for the public works, uh, uh, workers, the non-superv, supervising positions, the laborers and stuff, I don't see their contract. To me, it would have been beneficial to sign the contract and then give them their, uh, uh, hazard pay for the essential workers. I, I would think that that would be the way to go. I don't understand why a lot of energy is being spent on the essential pay and not on the contract. I, I'm a little perplexed with that. I've never seen them have a rally to talk about the mayor not signing a contract for them. And so, where is the contract tonight? Where is their contract? Because we can vote on that contract tonight, right along with the, uh, uh, hazard pay, but we don't have a contract for you. We don't have the contract in front of us, and the council has nothing to do with the contract. That has to come from the mayor. So.
Uh, Council President?
Last but not least, oh, where's the breakdown for the essential employees? And why is this, this, uh, allotment being asked for today instead of after the mayor have a concrete plan to put in front of us and have the, uh, uh, person that's going to be recording and keeping records, making sure that all documentation is in place? That's all I have to say, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes, so another example of the mayor running roughshod. He's gonna introduce hazard pay for a Pacific, um, uh, agency in the city of Trenton. This is only for the employees at the public library, and we know who they are. So, he's gonna make sure that one group, uh, individual gets hazard pay. He hasn't even got his plan approved. He said last night on the call, cause I was on the call from beginning to end, he said it was a proposed plan. So, Council President McBride, he, he didn't put a plan fo, forward, it's proposed. And most egregiously, it was just an overview, and it was just a listing of potential initiatives and projects that he thought that would be viable, right? And he hasn't introduced it to the council yet for approval, and he doesn't, he didn't even say when he's gonna in, introduce it to the council. No timeline, no prioritization, no phasing, right? You would think, he said, in phase one, we're gonna do the hazard pay. Phase two, we're gonna, we were gonna address, um, uh, uh, people's, uh, sewer bills, people's water bills, people's, uh, the citizens', um, uh, uh, rent bills and, and, uh, mortgages and taxes, right? None of that. Here, here he is talking about a dog park, when we got sixty parks that, that we can have a dog park. You know, New York City, Essential Park, they have a section where people can take their dogs. We have sixty parks in the city where people can take their dogs, but they wanna allocate four million dollars to a doggy park. When citizens are, people, human beings are suffering from the impact of the pandemic. That's what the Rescue Act money is for. Our city, because our citizens, because of who we are and our demographic, has been disproportionately impacted by the, uh, by the pandemic. And here we are, the mayor, again, violating the law, putting up on our docket hazard pay for the public library. We haven't approved, and then, you see, today, he puts out a press release that says that it's seventy million, when we got seventy-three point eight million. So what happened to the three million, Council President? In his press release, he's telling people that we only got seventy million, when we got seventy-three million. I guess no one noticed that on the council, huh? So, all I'm saying is, this, this is the perfect example where this vote should be unanimously, no. Pending the mayor putting forth a comprehensive plan, an executable plan with timelines and phases of the priority initiatives that need to get, to get the money to the people that has been earmarked for. Get that to the council for approval, should have been done already. It should have been done already. Easy math, phase one, we're doing the most critical, uh, 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 services and the most critical projects. All the other ones are nice to haves. He, he doesn't wanna do that. So, at the end of the day, this particular resolution should not go forward. The council should, voted down to, uh, Nazi oversight, Council President. That's the approval, that's the powers that we have. But yet, guaranteed, certain members of this council, because they're puppets and they're rubber stampers, they're gonna vote for this knowing that it's in violation of the American Rescue Act plan and the US Treasury are gonna come in here and shut us down. And, 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 and good for them. And I'll be the first one to send them a letter to report that we're giving out money, writing checks, and we're not doing our due diligence, not following the guidelines, giving out money to nonprofit organizations, uh, uh, people who don't even fit the criteria of having hazard pay. The library, was the library open during COVID? Are they essential employees? So, I don't know, maybe they are, but we haven't done the, uh, due diligence to say that they are. But yet, the mayor got a hundred and twenty-two thousand going to the library employees. My answer would be no, and I will hope that the council president will, will, will engage the council tonight to all vote unanimously for this. And, and no, thank you.
Councilwoman Colwell Wilson?
Yeah, first of all, the councilwoman making up facts again. There is no line item in the expenditures for a doggy park, so that's baloney. And, and secondly, I have asked the administration to give me a breakdown on what titles were getting the hazard pay and who was working, um, and I'm not sure if all the employees are aware, but the hazard pay does not apply to workers that worked at home. So you can't give the hazard pay to everybody. Um, I don't want to deny the hazard pay going out, but I'm having a serious problem, and, and, and the councilwoman is right. We have a real serious problem with the mayor giving us the information that we need to process this. But, you know, I, I, you know, I just, I'm, I'm just throwing up my hands in the air because it doesn't matter what we do. The administration continues to dis, disrespect the council, but I'm not gonna punish employees because we're having an issue with the mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison has just stand up now.
Yes, yes, sir, yes. Councilman Harrison?
Right, um, first of all, regarding the negotiating of the contract that's been done between the union and the administration, not the city council. Um, but regarding the hazard pay, every one of my colleagues said that people deserve hazard pay. So, I'm not sure why now we're saying, no, no, no. I read the American Rescue Act, it does not say that. Yeah, Council President, I didn't, did I interrupt you? I didn't, please stop that. You, you look, you, you, I read it, I'm not sure what you're talking about. I read it, and the problem is, I already bring up a name earlier, and I told you, I'm Michael DeLoreto, right? Said there was no name, I gave you the name. So, maybe we should pay attention when we are in those meetings, because I was listening to that. But at the, at the end of the day, we told the people that were working during COVID that we're entitled to hazard pay. Now, we're talking out the other side. So at the end of the day, are you really for the people? Because the first one is twenty-one, two sixty-six for the library, and twenty-one, two sixty-seven is for the employees. So, the city employees, they deserve hazard pay, so I'll be voting yes for this. Thank you very much.
Say, uh, President McBride?
Go right ahead, Councilman Blakeley.
Thank you, so I just wanna say that I'm very pleased to be voting on these two resolutions in particular. Uh, I'm very excited that our hardworking municipal employees will be getting, uh, hazard pay, uh, in honor of their, uh, in, in appreciation uh, for their hard work during a time of great strife and struggle uh, in the city of Trenton. I'm looking at the language of the resolution, and the fact that twenty-five percent of, um, of, of city employees got COVID is something that is incredible. Um, I had COVID, and I definitely realized how, uh, difficult, uh, COVID was for so many people based on my own personal experiences. And so I think that this is a really good move, I support it. I know that this has the support of, of the labor unions, it has the support, uh, city employees, has the support of city employees, and it has my support as well, and I'll be voting for both of these resolutions dealing with hazard pay for, uh, employees of the library as well as, uh, general municipal employees, thank you.
Come on, man.
Madam President? Yes, go right ahead, uh, uh.
I would be supporting this res, both resolutions because, uh, it, it, I tell you, I was lucky that I didn't get that COVID stuff, but I saw people suffering with it, and we have, our workers were exposing themselves every day. They didn't call in the morning, wait, oh, no, no, I'm not gonna go. I'm, I'm gonna wait until eleven, since it's clear to go. No, no, they were there. Garbage collectors were here every week, twice a week, the same as always, the same as always, they were here. Healthcare workers in the, in health department, I went out with them, they were out there, you know, and... Yes, there, if, if you didn't, if you didn't work, if you were at home all the time, you're not entitled to that. That has to be clarified to the workers, not everybody is gonna get that money. But, yes, I'm gonna vote for it because they cannot be waiting, they cannot be waiting. Our workers don't make good money. We have been talking about it, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars, pennies, pennies. They're gonna get a two percent, two percent increase in this, this, uh, contract, retroactive to three years because they haven't got that. They need that money, uh, they should, uh, get it. And we'll deal with, uh, the auditors are aware of that, Mercadian is aware of it, uh, Mr. Zalinski know, that, that he has to get advice from the auditors, and that's all it takes, let's go for it. Yes, I agree with the financier for the rest, for the rest of the money, yes. I agree with, uh, uh, with a financier officer getting there. But for this, for the workers, for the pay, no, let's give it to them, and then the rest, we, we take care of it later.
Cue first, ask question later.
Council President, Mr. Michelle would like to be heard.
Yes, Councilman Michelle.
I just like, I just like to say I'm support of both of them resolutions, two sixty-six.
We got it.
Two sixty-six, three sixty-seven.
Please do not interrupt the council.
They deserve every penny of it, they work hard for it, and they have my support, one hundred percent. Thank you.
So, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Um, not seeing any, um, more hands. Mr. Colin, can you move to the vote?
Yes, ma'am, I have been instructed by Mr. Harrison, a second by Mr. Michelle. This is a resolution authorizing appropriation of one hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one to provide premium hazard pay to the eligible employees of the Trenton Free Public Library. Ms. Blakeley?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
I'm abstaining from the vote.
Why are the library people getting it if they didn't work?
Okay, excuse me, please, uh, you, 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 disable that person's mic. Uh, can't, we cannot have interruptions at this meeting, it's late enough, please, thank you. Resolution does pass by a vote of six to, I'm sorry, five to one, with one abstention. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash two sixty-seven, a resolution authorizing the city of Trenton to provide free man hazard pay. to eligible employees and appropriate 7, 7,962,208, uh, $208.36 pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Do we have a motion?
Send it.
Second, second.
I have a second by Mr. Michelle.
Um, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay. Um, I am for good government. I, I stand for good government. And I stand for, and I appall corruption. And I like to do things by the letter of the law. And you could never, you can never win. You will never win by circumventing the law. So, the mayor has not given you a contract in over four years for the blue collar workers. No pay, and not one person came to council and, or come to the mayor's office and stunk their feet and cried that you haven't gotten your contract. Or you haven't even gotten, you should be raising hell that you're not even getting a competitive, a competitive, a competitive increase. You haven't, you haven't held your unionship, your, your union leadership accountable. You haven't raised hell with them. But here now today, first, uh, um, relief that we get from our federal government to help not only city workers, but that money supposed to help all the residents in the city who aren't city workers, to think that you can advantage yourselves just because you're a city worker and you think that, oh, forget that the money was allocated for Trenton, Trentonian. You don't just get this money just because you're a city worker. You gotta follow the law like everybody else. The mayor does too, and certainly this council does. And I can feel passionate about, I do believe what the law says. The only people who are eligible that meets the criteria for hazard pay are the essential workers. And we all know who the essential workers are. I looked at our emergency management plan, and it outlines in detail who they are. Is the police department, is the fire department, certainly not the library. No way is the library deemed essential workers. They should not be getting a dime. The law's clear, if they work from home, they should not, they're not eligible. And we're breaking the law, the council too, if we pass and approve that. So, back to who the, who the essential workers are, who the first responders are, who the frontline workers are. Those are the people who are eligible for this pay. And that $7 million should be reduced to that number of individuals. They're in the police department, they're in the fire department, they're in the emergency management department, they are in, uh, public works, and they are in waterworks, they're in a, a sewer department, and they're in parks and recreation. Those are the areas that are deemed essential workers and frontline. Anybody else, if you work from home and you take that money, you need to, you are in violation of the law. And the mayor should not allow that to happen in the business administrative area, and the law department should not allow that.
Don't forget about health.
So, oh, and health department, I'm sorry, in the health department, absolutely, 100%. Thank you for that. So, those are the essential areas that have been defined by our emergency management plan as essential workers. Everybody else, you don't get that money. If you're getting it, you got it illegally, and you're in violation of the law. So, and I will say, I heard from union leadership that Mayor Gusiora declared, and this is for the 150 residents that is on the call, who are not city workers. Mayor Gusiora told the city workers that he has declared every single city employee essential worker. The mayor declared every single en, employee essential worker. Based on what? Now, you know, that's some real lawlessness. That's some, that's some over-the-top lawlessness. So, people, y'all need to get that man up out of Trenton. Because if he thinks he's gonna give out $7 million to every city employee just so he can get a vote from 1,400 union people, and you think I'm gonna sit here and break the law? I'm not gonna even vote on this because it's so lawlessness, lawless. The mayor needs to get on this line, guys, because I know he's listening, and explain himself that he's telling the Ask Me Union that he declared every city employee an essential employee. You know what? That undermines all the departments who have been legally defined, who has literally went out there, every employee in the public works department, in the health department, and, and the police department, the fire department, the EMS department, public works, parks and recreation, front, these are frontline. To give those other workers this money is to undermine the sacrifice those individuals have put forward. It undermines the effort that they put forward. They are entitled, they are deserving. Not Robin Vaughn, not the people at the library, they don't deserve it. They didn't make the sacrifice. They're not eligible. What are we doing as a society here? What are we doing at the city? What are we doing as a council? Have we lost our way? You cannot give that money to those individuals when the people on, on, in the public works department, on the fire, on the fire trucks, on the, um, uh, in the health department, giving out needles and taking tests are out there? The union leadership should be ashamed of themselves. And the mayor should be just, I'm just disgusted with him. I don't know what to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So, um, and anybody, if council members who want to just grandstand and want to defy the law time and time and get into support of that mayor, I don't know what he's doing for you guys, but nobody's gonna make me skirt the law because you're not gonna win that way. So, that's all I got to say. But I won't be voting on this, and I hope that the administration do the right thing and follow the law. And I just want to say one more thing, Council President. I appreciate you, but I want to say one thing. If we give those workers who work from home and who had the commendations to come in once or twice a week with all the PPE and all the installations to protect them at the time when, uh, when we finally opened up a little bit, I, I would propose not give them any of that money and double the money to the essential workers. So, the people on the back of the garbage trucks, the health department, the police department, instead of giving them 7,000, give them 14,000. But those individuals who work from home don't deserve a dime. So, don't play with me. So that's my word on the record. So anybody wants to challenge me, y'all know how to get in touch with me. I'm interested to, I, I, I'd be happy to talk to you. But that's my, that's, that's my position. Thank you guys very much. Have a nice evening. Thank you, Council President.
President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead.
Can we move to the vote?
Um, I still have hands up, sir, and they need to speak. Uh, Councilman Harrison?
Oh, oh, the last one is IT. IT, IT department is on the OME Plan 2. I'm sorry. The technology.
Councilman Harrison?
Um, my point is that, yes, my hand is up. Uh, my point is this, tonight we're being told that hazard pay is corruption. So, union members, maybe what you think about that, hazard pay is corruption. And my colleague's making comments, uh, where's that evidence? So, what the union said, or this person said, or that person said? Uh, like I said, at the end of the day, it said that key word, hazard pay is corruption. That's what it said. So, the people who were out there working, a lot of them got COVID, they deserve that money. They deserve, see, look, there she goes again, interrupting me. They deserve that money. The people who are out there working. See, I seen them out there working, and at the end of the day, they deserve that money. So, at the end of the day, I will be voting for this because the people who are out there, they deserve hazard pay. Thank you very much.
President McBride?
Yes, uh, Councilman Blakely, you said go to the vote, and I was letting everybody that wanted to speak have a, uh, say.
Well, I, I just, I just want to say this. Um, all of our city employees did an amazing job during this pandemic. And this is the very least we can do to ensure that their sacrifice and their service uh, is, is honored and respected. And I will be voting in favor of this. I believe that even folks who worked from home, uh, worked under conditions, uh, that were, um, very, very, very tough. And, and, and I want to say, I thank all of the city workers. You know, our city workers have a very, very tough job. They don't get paid a lot of money, particularly the ones who live in the city of Trenton. Many of them are making 30,000, 35, uh, 35,000, 40,000. You know, very raving families on this salary, living in the city of Trenton. And so, this is an opportunity for us to honor their sacrifice. Many of the people live in the city of Trenton are municipal workers by and by live in the city of Trenton, the people who work for the city government. And so, I think that this is a good thing. I think, uh, allegations of corruption and malfeasance are ridiculous and, and, and are meant to, uh, bully folks for working hard. Uh, and I just want to say, I stand with the city employees who, uh, have worked so hard and deserve this, uh, 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 this hazard pay uh, to, uh, mitigate any of the challenges, uh, that they face, uh, during COVID. Nobody is getting rich being a municipal employee. And I want to ask one last question. City council members will not be eligible for this, um, for this, uh, for these payments, correct?
No, they, no, I'm gonna answer that for you. No.
Yeah, can I have someone from the city, uh, I just want to be clear, because if I get a, a donation, if I get a payment, yeah, I'm not gonna accept it.
You're not a union employee, uh, Councilman.
I'm just throwing it out there. I just want to be very clear for everyone, uh, that city government, but I believe the people in our clerk's office, even the people in our clerk's office who were working, um, from home were working very, uh, very hard. And many folks,
They, they accepted documents for every day for the city. They did a heroic job. I can't say that.
They did, they did a fantastic job. And so, this is, uh, the, the pandemic.
Our employee, our employees in the clerk's office was in the clerk's office working, but when they were home, they did not have the equipment at home to service the city. So, when they were home, they did not have nothing but a telephone, and they did not service the city. But when they were in that office, they serviced the city. Let's not get that twisted.
So, 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 so we should, so, 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 so we should, here's the thing. There were a number of, of, of struggles that our employees had to face, uh, working at home. Just because many employees may not have had the opportunity, uh, you know, to go into, uh, the office and had to do their work. So there are a number of, um, significant challenges that our members who worked from home had to deal with. And so to say that, uh, there's two tiers of employees in the city of Trenton, uh, those who worked in person, uh, you know, should be congratulated. And the people who worked at home under varying taxing conditions, uh, not having the equipment that they needed and struggling through that to do their jobs, I think that we shouldn't divide our employees into different classes. I want to say, generally, they all did a good job. They all worked either on, on site for the city or at home in the midst of a very, very, uh, difficult pandemic. And for that reason, I'm gonna be voting to support this because I believe all employees matter. Thank you.
Thank you. So I,
Council President?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to kind of make it clear, and even the mayor alluded to it the other night. Working at home, you're not entitled to American Rescue Funds. So I just want to make that clear, that, 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 that's not part of the contingency for, um, for hazard pay. I mean, I'm all for the workers getting their hazard pay, but we have to go according to the rules. Thank you.
And I, I just want to say, I see some union representatives on this line, but where are they at for those people's, uh, contracts that haven't had a contract? They need to be ashamed of themselves up here running around for $7,000, but they won't even work hard for those people because in their contract is associated their pension, their social security, their health benefits. Where are these people at? But they're on here about $7,000, but they have not championed for those people a contract for the last three years at least. They need to be ashamed of themselves, all of them. But they're running around here talking about, "Give these workers $7,000." What? Give them a contract because that contract is associated with their social security, with their pension, and with their health benefits. I want to know, you talking about nothing nefarious happened. Ho, are you sure? When you have union people running around for $7,000, but won't get these people a contract signed? This is outrageous. And I seen 50 people out there talking about hazard pay, but nobody is talking about their contract. The mayor hasn't given these people a contract in three years. I don't see Deborah Parks talking about the contract. I don't see Ronald McMullin. I don't see Ramona. I don't see Paul Harris. Where are they? Why isn't that contract in front of us tonight? This is shameful. All of you are shameful. You should be ashamed of yourself. Do the, do the city workers deserve hazard pay? Yes. The councilwoman read off the list who is entitled to the hazard pay. When you talk about giving somebody a blanket check, that's not the way you do things. You give a list of all of the essential employees, and the mayor doesn't have the authority to declare everyone an essential employee. And as far as those union reps go, they need to be ashamed of themselves. They shouldn't even show their face in public because you have people retiring, retiring, and your retirement benefits and your social security benefits is based on your last five years of employment. You won't even increase their pay so that could be attributed to their retirement and their social security, their pension and their social security. Shame on you. Shame on you. Get your hand down if you're a union member. Go get the contract signed. Mr. Coleman, go for the vote, please.
Yes, Madam President. This is Resolution 11-267, a resolution authorizing the city Trenton to provide premium hazard pay to eligible employees, municipal employees, and appropriate 7,962,208.36 pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. I have a motion by Mr. Harrison and a second by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson. Send up all the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
Yes, I'm gonna vote, but I want everyone, everybody to know, I'm voting yes, but I will be tracking that payment list down, and if you was not an essential employee, you will be forking that money back over.
That makes no sense.
It does make sense.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
Once they cut the check, why would they give it back? You voted to approve it.
Uh, uh, the federal government, the federal government will make them give it back.
You already proved it, but you already proved it though, Council President. You approved it. Because they're gonna say, "You approved it." The city council approved it. Your, your, your approval, our approval matters.
I wanted to thank the members of the clerk's office for their heroic efforts during the pandemic and for all the other employees who will, send a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Put that on the screen.
Yes, ma'am. I'm bringing it up. It's on the screen now, man.
Yes, I got it.
This is the supervisor's unit.
Yes, I got it. Go right ahead with the, uh, Go right ahead with the, uh, with the vote.
Yes, ma'am. I have an introduction by Mr. Harrison and a second by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson. Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you repeat?
I said yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Council President McBride.
Yes.
So ordered, resolution carries unanimously, seven to zero. Next year, Resolution twenty-one dash three oh three, a resolution amending Resolution twenty dash six eighty-eight, closing municipal buildings on certain holidays observed by the city of Trenton in twenty twenty-one.
Don't move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson, I believe is, uh, the buzzer. Floor is open.
Continue with the vote.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Blakey. Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
So ordered. Next year, we have Resolution twenty-one dash two sixty-seven, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract with the law offices of Florio Kenny Rival, LLP, one twenty-five Chubb Avenue, Suite three ten, North Londonhurst, New Jersey, oh seven oh seven one, to provide continued professional legal services regarding general legal representation in regards to general and other legal matters in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Councilwoman.
Yes, ma'am.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Floor is open.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
I recall this one and the subsequent, uh, uh, resolutions regarding legal pay to these law firms. Now, Mr. Koloji presented a good recommendation that we should not start a contract at such a high, um, value, at such a high value. So, um, all I can say is, I had asked for the invoices of these respective law firms. And needless to say, the law department, again, our incompetent, crappy law department that needs to be all fired and, 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 and replaced by competent lawyers like Mr. Koloji, um, uh, sent me the invoices at four, after almost four thirty. Now, how could I possibly review them in time for the vote? So again, I don't know what measures this council can take against this administration. But I want something to be done about, uh, uh, the administration not supporting the council. Because we are not supporting the council, you're not supporting the residents of this city. So I just want to make that clear. So all the, all the individuals who work, uh, who are either an appointed or an elected official, you need to know that you support the residents and taxpayers of the city via the council. So you're not doing Robin Vaughn an injustice when you refuse to give the information. You do an injustice to all the people who are on this line and who live in the city of Trenton. I know the majority, seventy percent of you don't live in Trenton, which is another reason why you don't deserve hazard pay, because you don't live here. So, so, um, uh, um, so I don't know how I'm gonna make a decision tonight on these law firms when I haven't received the information until four thirty today, Council President. So I'm gonna talk to Mr. Koloji about having to adjust our rules of procedure and our ordinances to, to ensure, make laws around how the administration needs to perform and support the residents of this city. The law director in the law department represents the residents. And they can't get me the information? This is taxpayer-doubt. This is not my money or your money, Council President, or the Council Vice President's money. Or, or, or Mayor Regus yours money. This is.
Council President, I can't respond to this when she's done, by the way?
No, you can't.
Pretty pleased with cherries on top?
So, so, um, that's our, that's the law director, that's the law director that's running the city of Trenton, talking about some cherries on top.
I feel as though I need to respond to this because you're making allegations.
No, you don't need to respond. You needed to send me those invoices in a timely manner. Period. You needed to send me those invoices in a timely manner. Not at four thirty in the afternoon, an hour before the council meeting, that I can't review them.
He had to take three law firm's bills for entire.
No, no, no. Council President? He's out of his mind and incompetent.
You should hold up.
You could, you could move forward because I did not get the information. Um, I believe it was intentional. But again, you don't spite me, Mr. Bridges, or the mayor, or Mr. Cruz. You're doing injustice to the people of this city. And we can't move the city forward and we can't make decisions that's in the best interest of the taxpayers of this city because of your incompetence and your refusal to support properly this council. That you are, by law, particularly the law department, you represent the people. Wes sent me an email today. I, I told him, I, I mean, I stated in the email, that it's for the residents. And he replied, don't CC me on this. Clearly, he has no clue about government and, and who he represents and who he works for and who pays him. I have no desire to contact him for anything except for.
Councilwoman.
She asked me to continue with the vote.
So, Council President, I expect you, as the president of council, to have some type of consequences imposed upon this administration when they don't support the council that you're leading. You just went off on the leadership.
She covered the floor from you.
Pardon me?
Somebody stop her.
The floor has to move to the vote.
No, no, no.
This is Resolution twenty-one dash one sixty-seven, a resolution authorizing amendment to the contract with the law offices Florio Kenny Rival, LLP, one twenty-five Chubb Avenue.
Don't want to stop me.
Londonhurst, Suite seven oh seven one.
Don't be a coward.
Professional legal services regarding general legal representation in regards to general municipal and other legal matters in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yeah.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution passed by a vote of five to two. Next year, Resolution twenty-one dash one sixty-nine, a resolution authorizing amendment to the contract with the law offices Park Attorney's Law, nine thousand Mid-Atlantic Drive, Suite three hundred, PO Box five oh five four, Mount Laurel, New Jersey, oh eight oh five four, dash one five three nine, to provide continued professional legal services regarding legal representation in regards to general municipal and other legal matters in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Councilwoman.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Floor is open. As President, would you like me to move to the vote?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by motion, a sign by a vote of six to one. Next year, Resolution twenty-one dash two seventy, a resolution authorizing amendment to the contract with the law offices Trembolian Priznowski LLC, to provide professional legal services regarding labor and unemployment matters in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
You may continue, Mr. Collins.
Sorry, just taking notes. Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to two ordered. Next year, Resolution twenty-one dash three hundred, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract with the law offices of Renad, the Appaloni LLC, to provide continued professional legal services to represent the city council in litigation matters for a period of one fiscal year from July first, twenty twenty-one, to July third, twenty twenty-two, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
I have a motion by Council President McBride, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Floor is open. And would you like me to move to the vote?
Move on to the vote.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
No.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of four, five to two. Next year, Resolution twenty-one dash one seventy-one, a resolution in the city trying to counter Mercy State in New Jersey, determining the form and other details of its note relating to the water bank construction financing program of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank to be issued in the principal amount of up to twenty-five million dollars providing for the issuance and sale of such note to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank and authorizing execution and delivery of such note by the city of Trenton in favor of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, all pursuant to the water bank construction financing program of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakey, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open.
Well, Mr. Mr. Collins, did they pass the infrastructure bill tonight?
Uh, it is my, it, it wasn't up for a vote, but it is my understanding that late breaking news was that President Biden had agreed in principle with the United States Senate, uh, leadership of the Republican, um, you know, segment, uh, to an infrastructure bill in the area of one point one trillion dollars.
And so, um, under the infrastructure bill, the lead line replacement is one of the key components of that bill. There is no reason that we should be doing any broadband and any, putting any money out for broadband and any money out for the lead line replacement. Because if that infrastructure bill goes through, the lead line replacement is the key component in that piece. Mr. Collins, you may continue to.
Oh, no, no, I have, I have, I have a question.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
So, um, this twenty-five million, uh, we got a letter from our water law attorney, Mr. De Hope, regarding the council, advising the council. Now, Mr. Uh, Mr. Collins, can you put that letter on the screen?
Uh, which letter, ma'am?
The letter from our water law attorney advising us to vote yes for this twenty-five million dollar bond.
Uh, and I don't know if I actually received that, that may have gone to council directly, but I'm gonna try. Let me see what I got here.
I believe you sent it to us.
I sent a lot of things out today. It was pretty, pretty.
Okay, well, all right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll share it on my Facebook page with my constituents then. Uh, but, um, I, we got a letter from the water law attorney telling the council, municipal council, that we need to vote for this. Otherwise, the New Jersey Department of Environment Protection is going to move to, uh, to take over our water utility. A municipal water utility. They're gonna, the state is gonna move in because the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection ain't nothing but a department, an agency of the state. And they are threatening a sovereign, uh, municipality that has its own government and is gonna come over here and take over our utility. It's a joke. So I am appalled. I'm insulted. I'm, I'm tired of the state's threats on our water utility. And they, they, they have not come in. They have been negligent in oversight and the governance of the city of Trenton as a whole and on, on the water utility as well. Because if they were, uh, concerned about us being compliant with the ACO, they would ensure that the fiscal health of that utility is priority one. And they showed their negligence in governing us and governing those ACOs when they allowed the mayor to fleece the surplus during fiscal year twenty-one. And, and, and nothing is commented about that. Because that surplus could have went through, could have went to servicing and remediating the water infrastructure. Instead, the H, the, the, the DEP does not even ask about that money. So if they want to move, because they moved to take us to court before and lost and re, and, 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 and they settled or the order was pretty much, um, put aside. So if they want to go and try to take over our water department, it's time for us to challenge them in court. To back them the hell up. Because you're not gonna come in the city and tell me that I gotta give the mayor Regus, you are twenty-five million, when he's already got fifty million dollars worth of bonds out there, already issued and drawn down on. And we already put out sixteen million of those bonds, I mean, sixteen million of those dollars to the contractors to remade, to remediate the service that they are already behind on. The director already told us that they're behind. So why do they need any more money at this juncture? We don't need any more bond financing until they get caught up. And that's what the DEP should be doing. So what we need to be doing and what our attorney needs to be doing is telling the DEP that they need to get compliant. They need to provide better oversight to the city of Trenton. And if they don't start giving us better oversight and following the rules of the game here, then we're gonna file lawsuits against them in court. But we have such a weak law department that we're gonna have to go out and, and, uh, you know, uh, retain competent lawyers who can go and fight the battle in court and litigate for the interests of our city and the owners of that water utility. And I would say this, our customers should be just as appalled. Because the mayor has fleeced that money and has not used that surplus account to, to, um, to help remediate the infrastructure across the system. So I'm telling you, I'm not voting for this twenty-five million dollar bond. And then I'm gonna yield to threats by the DEP. Because it's time for the city of Trenton to push back on them. And we need to go to court and tell them to do their jobs. Because they're not doing their jobs. Because right now, Trenton Water Work is, I mean, it's just, it's not even being managed. We can't even get financials reports. We can't even get the, the forensic audit completed. So, Council President, what are we doing about that? So I'm not voting for this tonight. And, and, and I'm surprised, I hope everybody on our council didn't read Mr. De Hope's letter, but I bet you they didn't. Right? Who on council read Mr. De Hope's letter?
Councilwoman.
So I'm done. Thank you, Council President. They didn't read it, but yet they're gonna vote and give the mayor twenty-five more million dollars to take out of the city.
President McBride.
Thank you.
President McBride.
Councilman Blakey.
Yeah, so, uh, a couple of things. Uh, Trenton is not a sovereign government. That's a fact. The councilwoman just mentioned that we're a, you know, sovereign government. No, the city of Trenton is a political subdivision of the state. And so we, we were political, we're a political subdivision of the state. That's what, and so we are governed by laws. We are, we are not a kingdom. President, uh, President McBride, could you please, uh, tell the councilwoman to not.
Councilwoman Vaughn, please.
Thank you. So, 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 so let me just ask the lawyers, because I'm not a lawyer. Because I firmly believe, that's why you have lawyers, to, to render, uh, legal questions, right? And so let me ask, um, is the city of Trenton sovereign in a way that, uh, the councilwoman mentioned?
Mr. Mr. Collins, you have to mute Councilwoman Vaughn. For some reason or another, she won't allow another council member to speak without interruption.
I will, I will monitor.
So, so, Mr. Bridges, Mr. Mr. Bridges, are we, uh, is this a sovereign government in, in terms of not accountable to anybody and that we could basically do our own thing?
Um, clearly not. At, at, as any political body, you're, you're answer to the people. You're answer to the, to the laws, to the statute, to the ordinance that are enacted. It, it is not a sovereign. You're, you're answer to the people who elected you to be in office.
Good, thank you. And, and you would say that, um, in terms of, of a government, Trenton is a political subdivision of the state?
Uh, if, if, yes, to, and, and that comes in different forms, but that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And so my point is, uh, so now that we got that established, we're accountable to state laws, federal laws, guidelines. No, we just can't do our own thing. And so now that that is definitively established, it's important to go to the next point. I did read, uh, the letter, uh, from our lawyers, uh, giving their counsel, their wisdom over one hundred years of, uh, legal, um, uh, history and. legal, um, uh, history and legal experience. And they were very clear in black and white, highlighting, uh, that failure to pass these bonds could lead to dramatically negative implications for the city. That's what it said. Councilwoman Vaughn is not the only one who reads their docket. I read my docket, and I'm sure many of my other colleagues read their docket, and their counsel is very, very clear. We should pass these, um, you know, the, this, this, uh, resolution to, uh, fund the improvements to the waterworks, put a blank period. And to be quite frank, this isn't something that I need the attorneys to tell me. We have very old infrastructure in the city of Trenton. And we have children and elderly that are drinking water for pipes that are not safe. And that's why it's important that we have the infrastructure improvements to ensure that the people of the city of Trenton and beyond who use the water in the, um, in the, uh, waterworks are drinking healthy water and that the infrastructure is safe and modern. And so for that reason, I'm going to vote to approve this, and I think it would be wise for us to pay, uh, heed to the counsel of our attorneys that, as I mentioned, have over one hundred years of legal experience dealing with water utilities. They are telling us, and we reject their counsel as a council body at our, and our residents' peril. And so this is a slam dunk, easy decision. The law opinion from the waterworks is clear, from our water attorneys are clear, and we need to support this so that our residents can drink water without being concerned of the unhealthy nature of it. Thank you.
So, uh, we, uh, I, I would like to go for the vote. Uh, we will be getting sixty-five billion dollars for water infrastructure, and the lead line replacement is a part of that infrastructure bill that Biden just passed. Uh, Mr. Collins, will you move to a vote, please?
Uh, Council President, uh, this is for Resolution twenty-one dash one seventy-one.
Go right ahead, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Blakeley, your vote's up.
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, Mr. Ms. Colwell-Wolson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
Resolution carries by vote four to two. Uh, I just need to make sure one thing. Um, Mr. Klose, do you recall if bonds and notes require two-thirds of vote or a simple majority?
I believe the adoption of a bond ordinance, in my recollection, requires a greater number, but we would have to look it up.
Yeah, if you just give me one second, counsel. I just need to confirm. It's late. I'm tired.
Uh, I think, I'm almost certain that you need a two-thirds majority for a bond.
I'm almost certain.
On the up, five votes.
You need five votes.
This is not a bond ordinance. This is Ron Zelinski. It's not a bond ordinance. It's the issuance of notes.
Okay, okay, good.
Thank you. And if, I just, I mean, is it a bond ordinance, Mr. Uh, Mr. Klose, for the best of your recollection?
I've never seen the document, Mr. Clerk. It's.
Okay, it's part of the packet. Um, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say it, it, it is four to three right now. I'm not actually gonna say whether it's approved or not uh, based upon a legal opinion that I'm gonna ask for because it is a note. A bond ordinance does require two-thirds. I don't know if the use note and bond ordinance would have the same bearing effect, so just the vote is four to three. Um, and I'm just gonna let the legal law department tell me whether it's, uh, adopted or not, uh, and that is to be determined tomorrow. Thank you very much. Actually, Resolution twenty-one dash two thirty. And this is a resolution of the city of Trenton, the county of Mercer, state of New Jersey, authorizing the submission of an application to the local finance.
Um, uh, uh, in the past, we issued bonds before. They didn't need two-thirds.
Now, bond ordinance just do require.
I'm saying even when we issued notes, we've done this before several times, and we need two-thirds of vote, but.
I just, I just want to.
But I agree.
I don't want, I don't want to say it on the record without it being true, so I just want to make the law department, you know, let the law department make that ruling. Uh, but we do have the recorded votes, so whatever it is, it is. Uh, this is Resolution twenty-one dash two thirty, a resolution of the city of Trenton, the county of Mercer, state of New Jersey, authorizing the submission of an application to the local finance board requesting approval of four million dollar bond ordinance to finance the replacement of water mains by Trenton Water Works under the provisions of the Municipal Qualified Bond Act under NJ SA forty-eight, call it three dash one, that's it. And this is not a bond ordinance. This is a, uh, approving an application, so, uh, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Harrison, I have a second by Ms. Colwell-Wolson. Floor is open.
Uh, yes, um, Council President?
Go right ahead.
Um, we just, uh, you know, move, we, we just passed a, the resolution to move to a fiscal year, um, budget cycle to a calendar year budget cycle. And under the law, it says that the, the municipality who's in that process, in that transition, cannot seek bond financing. So why are we seeking bond financing when, again, the law doesn't permit it because we have opted to move the calendar year? Um, so why is this on the docket? If we're not allowed to bond during the period that we're transitioning to a different budget cycle? Can somebody answer that, Mr. Uh, Klose or Mr. Bridges? Because the law says.
This is Ron Zelinski.
No, I didn't ask you, Vaughn. I asked Ron.
For the transition to the calendar year. You have to get the president's permission to speak.
No, I did, I did ask, and I asked Mr. Klose.
Yeah, I do not have the.
Why is Mr. Why is Mr. Zelinski jumping in?
So let us move forward, please. Mr. Klose, you, you don't have the answer for the question. Um.
Council President? Council President, yeah, the woman, I, I honestly don't have the answer to that question. It would have to be researched. I'm, you know.
Does, um, does Mr. Bridges have the answer to that question? Mr. Bridges, do you?
Sorry, I love, no, I do not. Again, it, it, it's, it's a detailed answer, question. It would have to be researched. I don't have an answer off the top of my head, no.
Council President.
Y-yes.
Uh, I would like to hear from Mr. Zelinski what he has to say.
Well, that's not important. The, the councilwoman had the floor, and she was asking the question, Mr. Harrison. She, the, the councilwoman was asking the question, and she posed her question to the attorneys.
Right, and my question is.
So, but you didn't have the floor.
Okay, then I'll wait till you're done, and then I'll, I'll have the floor then. Thank you very much.
All right.
So, um, so, um, so when can, so, are, are, can we table this until we get the answer?
Yes.
Yeah, so let's table until we get the answer. Because I, I, because I know, I mean, I don't want to go out on a limb here, but I'm almost certain that I read the law when we are making that transition, that we cannot bond. That's one of the restrictions as, as a municipality transition to the, the, the calendar year. You cannot seek any bond financing. So I would like to move to table this until.
I do have a motion to table, uh, twenty-one dash two thirty. Do I have a second to the motion? I have a second by Mr. Rodriguez. I will call the roll for this because this is.
And you didn't let me see.
Uh, sir, the, uh, most, sorry, sir, but a motion to enter to led to table was entered, and it is actually a motion that must be, it must be heard without debate according to Roberts rules, and I can put the chart up.
Before, it was ever even brought up about table. And I asked a question before.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, he did.
The council, it doesn't matter.
Why don't you?
Now we'll move forward with the motion, and Mr. Harrison can ask his question to Mr. Zelinski after the motion.
Change the rules again.
Getting out of control here.
No, the rules are, the rules are, the.
The rule said I should wait.
She still has the floor.
She has the floor. She entered a motion table. A motion table must be entered without debate. I have a motion. I have a second. I'll call the roll for the motion table. Ms. Vaughn is tabling this motion until she received a legal, uh, an opinion from the legal department for the question regarding this motion. Mr. Blakeley, with you on the table.
No.
Mr. Blakeley votes no. Ms. Colwell-Wolson.
No.
Ms. Colwell-Wolson votes no. Mr. Michelle. I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison.
No.
Mr. Harrison votes no. Mr. Michelle.
No.
Mr. Michelle votes no. Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes aye. Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes, I, I vote to table it although it fails because I believe that, that, that we need to understand whether or not you can borrow once you went into the calendar year. Councilman Harrison, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zelinski, I was gonna ask you that question. Could you please elaborate again? Thank you very much.
Can I speak?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, the financing it refers to under the change to fiscal year is we cannot issue any bonds to change back to the calendar year. When we went to fiscal year, we were allowed to issue bonds. When we go back to the calendar year, we are not allowed to issue bonds to go back to the calendar year. It doesn't preclude capital financing.
Thank you very much. Well, appreciate it.
All righty, so, um, the, uh, the vote, uh, is on the floor for the, um.
Is actually approved. The, the, the motion on the floor right now is for approval of Resolution twenty-one dash two thirty. Ma'am, did you want me to call the vote?
What, let, let me, what's that? Did you read that? What is that?
Uh, this is, this is the resolution on the floor. This is a resolution of the city of Trenton, the county of Mercer, state of New Jersey, authorizing submission of an application to the local finance board.
Of the fourth.
Yes, we, we only voted to table it, that, with. So I have a motion to, uh, adopt by Mr. Harrison, a second by Ms. Colwell-Wolson. Would you like me to move to the roll, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakeley.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wolson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
Uh, the resolution is adopted by vote of four to three. Actually, Resolution twenty-one dash.
Uh, the president?
Yes, miss, yes, Mr. Uh, Councilman.
What was the short of that resolution?
Uh, it was adopted by vote of four to three.
But that's a bond, that's a bond.
Well, it's not actually a bond. What it is, is a resolution authorizing a submission of an application to the local finance board, which does only have to be. Thank you, sir. Uh, next we have Resolution twenty-one dash two seventy-four, a resolution authorizing transfers to be made by the director of finance of the fiscal year twenty twenty appropriations. Uh, there was a typographical error on the initial, uh, the typographical error was sent out to counsel by Ms. Rodriguez earlier today. Uh, Mr. Uh, Zelinski can give you the, uh, details on the typographical error. There's one, uh, the one bottom line said five hundred dollars. The other bottom line said did not have the five hundred dollars. They made it, uh, to equal the proper amount. So that is an amendment to the resolution. Does actually amend the amount. Mr. Zelinski, can you actually give me the proper amount?
Um, do I have that in front of me? No.
Here's the six.
The amount does include, we added five hundred dollars at the end.
The amount.
Proper amount does include the five hundred dollars.
Okay, so on the top line, it had, uh, with, it had the transfer was, uh, from, and they had six hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred. They had sixty seven, six hundred sixty-seven thousand without the five hundred. The bottom line didn't include the five hundred. Mr. Zelinski corrected the amendment to include the five hundred on the top line, so that's the difference. The total transfer is six hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion as amended?
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell-Wolson. Floor is open.
We continue with the vote.
Um, I just have a question, quick question on the transfer. I think the transfer, and it has a five hundred, a half a million dollar transfer to the police department, salary, salary and wages. Can Mr. Zelinski explain that?
When we project what the payroll is gonna be to the end of the year, there were not enough money in the police budget to pay salaries.
Why is that? But we already knew what the, we, we, we had, nothing changed in the police department. What changed?
The overtime being paid.
Overtime?
Yes.
Okay.
Continue to, with the vote, Mr. Collins.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want, I, I just want the people to know, a half a million dollars. A half a million dollar overtime in the police department.
I have an introduction by Mr. Harrison, a second by Ms. Colwell-Wolson, Mr. Blakeley.
I want to get rid of.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
Uh, that is, and I just, I, I think budget transfers actually do have to be approved by a two-thirds vote. Uh, just have to check for a second. Uh, appropriation transfers must be during the first three months of the succeeding year. Resolution adopted by two-thirds vote with full membership is required. During the last two months of the current budget fiscal year by a resolution adopted by two-thirds vote. Accordingly, I do need a two-thirds vote for this. This resolution transfer fails. Does require a two-thirds vote. I will check with law in the morning to ensure that I am correct on that. Uh, but I'm pretty sure that a budget transfer, uh, resolution does require a two-thirds vote. Actually, Resolution twenty-one dash two seventy-five, a resolution authorizing temporary utility fund appropriations prior to the final adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, six-month municipal utility budgets to the city of Trenton, New Jersey. Do I have a motion?
Uh.
So move.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell-Wolson. Floor is open.
Um, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Now, this is part of, when I, when I reviewed this, um, it's two schedules that they put forward for the, uh, water, for Trenton Water Works, the Department of Water and Sewer, Water Utility. Um, this is for six months fiscal year twenty-two for the calendar year, correct, Mr. Uh, Zelinski?
No, this is for the transition, six-month transition period.
Yeah, so from, from July first, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, correct?
Correct.
Yes. So, um, it didn't look like, uh, it just looked like it was half of the fiscal years, the full fiscal year twenty-one budget, correct? Is that how you calculated it?
Yes, on the, uh, well, this is which?
The water.
Yes, this was half of, uh, yes, it was.
Okay.
Half of the fiscal twenty-one.
Okay. All right, yeah, I didn't see any material, um, issues, but, you know, again, we didn't get enough time to review it. And I didn't get a time enough to do it with my council members, but, you know, here we are, and we've already approved to make the transition, so we gotta do that. So, um, you know, I yield my time, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, could you continue with the vote?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Resolution twenty-one dash two seventy-five. Uh, this is to authorize, uh, the twenty-six point two five's totally utility fund appropriation. Resolution authorizing temporary utility fund appropriation prior to the final adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, six-month municipal utility budgets to the city of Trenton, New Jersey. Mr. Harrison introduced, second by Ms. Colwell-Wolson, Mr. Blakeley.
Yes.
Ms. Blakeley votes aye. Ms. Colwell-Wolson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
Okay, and I don't know, uh, this is not an appropriate, this is not a transfer for budget approval. I think this is a simple majority. Once again, I'll get back to the legal opinion on that. I do believe it passed, but I gotta check with the legal department for the outcome of the final vote due to the nature of the budget, uh, issues. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash two seventy-six, a resolution making temporary appropriations for interest and debt redemption charges for the utility funds prior to the final adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, six-month budgets to the city of Trenton, New Jersey. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell-Wolson. Floor is open.
You may continue, Mr. Collins.
Twenty-one dash two seventy-six. Uh, and I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakeley?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wolson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
Once again, this is a, uh, a temporary budget. I think it's a simple majority, but I'm gonna ask legal in the morning for an opinion, but the vote was four to three. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash two seventy-seven, a resolution making temporary on-front budget appropriations prior to the final adoption of the transitional year twenty twenty-one municipal budget of the city of Trenton, New Jersey. I have a motion.
Uh, um, so moved.
By Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Vaughn. Floor is open.
Um, yes, uh, Mr. Colin, um, these are all budget appropriations and budget. Um, and, uh, I believe, from my knowledge, since I've been on council, all of this needs two-thirds vote.
Uh, I, I'm not one hundred percent sure.
I know, I, I understand that.
It might be a simple majority for temporary budgets, but yeah, it requires affirmative vote. Affirmative vote or the full of the majority of.
I understand, Mr. Colin, um, but I will say, I'm very disappointed. Again, here we are in a public meeting with over a hundred people on the call from, from our residents and our law director can't answer any of the questions. Never come prepared to the council to.
Councilwoman.
Ask for the question. Well, you know, it's a fact and I have the floor and I, I will yield my time, Council President, but that's my, that's my op- opinion and that's my advocacy for my constituents that the law department has failed my constituents. So that's, and that's, that's a statement.
Yes, ma'am. This is for adoption.
So I'm done.
This is Resolution twenty-one dash two seventy-seven. This does require a simple majority. It's a resolution making temporary recurrent funded budget appropriations prior to the final adoption of the transitional year twenty twenty-one municipal budget of the city of Trenton, New Jersey. Uh, I have a motion by Mr. Harrison and a second by.
Uh, point of clarification, Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, you said, uh, twenty twenty-one, I believe that this was supposed to be say twenty twenty-two also. That's why we clarify, yes, uh, right, uh, usually.
I think, I think the change was actually to, uh, changing it from the, uh, word fiscal year to transitional year of Mr. Zelinski. Uh, but Mrs. Zelinski requested the change, so I'm, I'm not one hundred percent sure.
The, the, the twenty twenty-one, so fiscal year.
Uh, Mrs. Zelinski, is it the twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two? Uh, is that supposed to be twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two?
Supposed to be twenty-one.
Okay, so it is the transitional year twenty twenty-one budget, correct?
Correct.
Exactly. Okay, so for Mr. Rodriguez, for the clarification, it is trans, correct, is transitional year twenty twenty-one. Madam President, would you like me to move the vote?
Yes, please.
Uh, Mr. Harrison introduced, Ms. Vaughn second and Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle. Mr. Rodriguez.
Hello.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
And could we please mute that person? Hold on one second, please. I'm gonna take care of that. Okay, the vote, the temporary budget does, is adopted by a vote of four to three. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash two seventy-eight. A resolution authorizing assignment of twelve tax sales certificates totaling one hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents pursuant to NJ SA. Colon five dash thirteen. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Floor is open.
Uh, um, yes, it's, it's Robin, uh, Ms., Ms., uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, here we are in the aftermath of, of, of COVID. Uh, I wouldn't say the aftermath, totally, we're, we're in a recovery period. And here in the rescue act, um, again, why are we moving homes to tax sale certificates and, um, and shouldn't folks have an opportunity to get caught up on their taxes before they go to lean?
And that would be a question for the, um.
The administration of Mr. Cruz. Yes, Mr. Cruz. Uh, Mr. Cruz, why are we having tax sales in the aftermath or in the recovery period of the pandemic? I know, you know, and, and, you know, in the mortgage world, uh, they've extended, um, that, that the government, the federal government, uh, state government extended to end of this month if folks needed more time with their mortgage payments and therefore, what do you call it, forbearance and all that stuff? So why isn't the city of Trenton allotting folks a little more time to get caught up before they pushing their homes to tax saleing?
Uh, Madam President, I mean, this question was for Ron Zelinski, but I can answer that. That's not a problem. Um, uh, Council President, the, um, the reason why we do these tax sales is because there's a state statute that we must follow. Uh, as you are aware, sometime last year, the governor did a, um, did a moratorium on taxes for, I believe it was like two or three months, but then it got lifted. Uh, by state statute, not by means of the city, uh, we must do these sales. It is not something that we, that we can prevent. It is something that is required by state statute.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Oh, Mr. Colin. Ron Zelinski, we're talking about Resolution twenty-one two seventy-eight.
Yes, sir.
Um, can I speak?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, these are not, Reese, this is not a new tax sale. These are tax certificates that were sold in a previous year and we're now assigning those to a third-party investor.
Thank you, Mr. Zel- Zelinski. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Colin, Colin, could you move?
Yes, ma'am. I have an introduction by Mr. Harrison and a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, six to one, so ordered. Next we have Resolution eighty, a resolution in the city of Trenton County, emergency New Jersey authorizing an appropriation of up to three hundred fifty thousand dollars from funds provided to the city by the United States Environmental Board is open.
You may continue to the vote, Mr. uh, Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, so ordered, six to one. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash two eighty-three, a resolution ordering contract for fair and open process in accordance with NJ SA nineteen colon forty-four capay dash twenty point four at sec to Max Van Real Estate and Auction Company for live and online auctioneer services to dispose of city-owned real estate for a period of one year from July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirty, twenty twenty-two at seven percent buyer's premium paid at the buyer per RFP, paid by the buyer through RFP, per RFP twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson.
You may continue with the vote, Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Uh, no.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, six to one, so ordered. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash two eighty-three. Uh, actually, that was twenty-one two eighty-three. My apologies. Uh, right, next we have Resolution twenty-one dash two ninety-two, resolution ordering contract to Custom Bandag Inc. for the replacements that are being used by the TWW Garage for Construction and Maintenance Office. The county's Somerset opening contract number CC dash year zero one six dash one nine. Cooperative bidding number two dash SOC CP for a period of one year from June eleventh, twenty twenty-one to June tenth, twenty twenty-two and amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open. Council President, would you like me to move the vote?
Uh, that's, uh, twenty-one dash two eighty-three.
Two ninety-two, ma'am.
Oh, two ninety-two.
Yeah, two eighty-three, two eighty-three, we already, we, we actually adopted. Yeah, there's a bunch of ten, uh, between there. It's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight resolutions after the last one.
Go, um, go ahead, Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I have an introduction by Ms. Colwell Wilson and a second by Mr. Harrison, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, six to one, so ordered. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash two ninety-five, a resolution authorizing the execution of addendum number two to option and license agreement between licensed authority of Trenton City Utility and licensed E. New Single Wireless PCS LLC. I have a motion.
Don't move.
I have a motion. Harrison, do I have a second?
So moved.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Floor is open.
You may continue with the vote.
Uh, uh, yes, this is Resolution twenty-one dash two ninety-five. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, six to one, so ordered. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash two ninety-six, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract to Ducon Inc. for water main improvements at Clockner Road and associated side roads for a period of one year from June twenty-four, twenty twenty-one to June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two and an amount not to exceed two million, two hundred seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars to bid twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second? By Mr. Harrison. Floor is open.
Uh, Council President?
Go right ahead.
Um, yes, it's Director Lavenberg on the line. Okay, 'cause I can't hardly hear you. So if you could speak closer to your microphone would be good. Um.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Uh, so two point two million dollars uh, to a contractor to, uh, this is to, uh, clean out or the, the water liner, the liners in the pipes, correct?
Correct.
Did I, did I say that properly?
Yes, you did.
Yes. So my question is, this is for Hamilton Township. So why aren't we doing the same cleansing exercise across the whole water system? And Ewing and Lawrence and parts of Hope Well and, and the city of Trenton where city of Trenton has the oldest, um, uh, pipes or the oldest pieces of the infrastructure. So we're cleaning the lining of the pipes in Hamilton. Why aren't we doing the same cleaning throughout the infrastructure?
Uh, we are. Well, we have done this process, um, on five hundred miles of pipe to date out of our seven hundred miles of main and that has been, uh, distributed equally amongst the system with the exception of Hope Well, which is, um, already ductile iron pipe with cement line on the inside.
So you've already done it, so, um.
Five, five hundred out of seven hundred.
Okay, so. So I, I haven't seen this contract up in prior for Ewing, Hamilton, I mean, Ewing, Lawrence, Trenton and, uh, parts of Hope Well.
Well, we, again, we, we, we're not doing Hope Well because that's, uh, cement lined ductile iron pipe relatively new. Uh, we did have a second, um, resolution for this docket that, that got pulled, um, prior to this meeting for, uh, township of Ewing where we have some severe fire flow issues. So, uh, and again, I would be happy to provide you with a map of the, what has been done and what remains to be done.
Okay, but my question is, again, um, I was not aware, or I, I don't know if anybody on my council is aware. I had no idea that the old, the oldest pipes exist in the city of Trenton, period. And, and parts of North Trenton, parts of East Trenton, right? So why haven't this clean, cleaning exercise happened in Trenton? Because I was not aware that it has been performed in Trenton.
Uh, this has been an ongoing pro- process for at least the last ten years. I'd be happy to provide you with the maps of what sections of Trenton has been done. Thank you.
No, Council President, I'm not done yet. Why do you do that?
Because we need to move on.
No, I, no, no, I.
Second by the floor. Terminated at her discretion. This is Resolution twenty-one dash two ninety-six, resolution accepting bid and awarding contract to Ducon Inc. for the water main improvements at Clockner Road and associated side roads for a period of one year from June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one to June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two and amount not to exceed two million, two hundred seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars to bid twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by motion by a vote of five to two, so ordered. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash two forty-nine, which was moved to the consent agenda. Uh, to request Ms. Vaughn, this is Resolution twenty-one dash two forty-nine, a resolution authorizing the city of Trenton Department of Recreation, Natural Resources and Culture to apply for and accept a one million dollar green acres grant to construct the skate park and associated courts in Inteco Square. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open.
Council President?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, have this vote on the record. Uh, this is a one, one million dollar grant that's coming into the city and it was deemed to be utilized in its totality for a skate park. Um, I, I mean, at, at the end, I wanted to see a plan that tells us how, how much money was actually invested in building the park. And after hearing from my constituents, uh, across the West Ward, uh, the, the, the skate park was not a priority for the residents here on the west side. Um, you know, we want to see some investment of the same value, the same size invested in basketball, football, soccer and, uh, baseball. So baseball, football, basketball, soccer and track, track and field. And we do have a tennis center over here in the west ward and we do have one over in the east ward and, and so, um, those are the sports that, uh, we in the west ward support. And we just waiting for the mayor to invest that type of grant into those sports utilities, I mean, uh, facilities and, um, uh, and not in skateboard park that most black and brown people, uh, do not, uh, take interest in. Uh, next time we should invest in a hockey rink too, ice hockey rink, right? Uh, because it's two black, two professional hockey players. So that should, uh, interest Trentonians. But right now in the west ward, those are the sports, soccer, football, and I believe that Chester Jones, who's been asking for money for a soccer field, hasn't gotten a dime, but we're gonna go to a skate park. And we're gonna see how this gets, how this works out and how it gets maintained, but I just wanted this on, this vote on the record just so that folks could see what the outcome is gonna be for a park that, uh, that very few residents, you, you, not twenty-three-year-old, not twenty-four-year-old, but you know, young, young Trentonians would like, uh, would, would utilize. So, um, so let's go to vote, Council President.
Mr. Colin, you may continue.
I have my hand up, Council President.
Okay, um, I don't see it.
Oh, yeah, my hand.
Okay.
Uh, Bree Richardson gave an outline of the skate park, which is located in the north ward. Um, and she also gave an outline of what they would like to do in the future and all the other parks. Uh, we had multiple people calling on Tuesday night, uh, from all over, uh, supporting this skate park. Um, there was actually, uh, during the Olympics, we was told that there was from boarding town, an African-American man who's, who was in the Olympics. Uh, first time ever, skateboard. So at the end of the day, it shouldn't be, uh, it should be for all people. At the end of the day, we shouldn't make it regarding people's skin color. So at the end of the day, there's people play soccer, there's people to play baseball, that play basketball, football, whatever sport it may be, but I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of young kids that like to skateboard and there's a lot of adults. We have an indoor skate park over at the Wire Place, right? So at the end of the day, like you said, it, there's a plan to move the city forward and skate park, and there's a lot of. And there's a lot of people that called on, on Tuesday that are in support of this. So I think it's a wonderful ideal for moving the city forward and, uh, Antico Square. It's optimizing a place that had been a problem for many years with illegal dumping. It was cleaned up by D E P and a lot of people from the North Ward. I seen them out there sweating out there helping clean up the area. So at the end of the day, there's a lot of people that want to see that happen. Thank you very much.
Continue with the vote, Mr. Conlon.
President McBride.
Yes.
I'll, I'll be very quick. Uh, I just want to say I appreciate, I appreciate all of the residents uh, who contacted me. I've seen dozens of emails and support of this. I really appreciate the message of, of support for this project. I know many of our young people and older people are avid, uh, skateboard, uh, skateboarders. We have soccer fields in the city of Trenton. We have a plethora of basketball courts. We have track fields in the city of Trenton. What we don't have is a skateboard, uh, park. And the fact that the current field is, uh, 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 you know, not very, um, attractive, and the fact that this neighborhood will be getting a significant investment for a recreational, uh, space for young people is a good thing. And I look forward to voting for this, and I appreciate, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, uh, bringing this, uh, to an individual vote so everyone could see, uh, where we stand on this very important matter. Thank you.
Continue with the vote, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, I have an introduction by Ms. Cole Wilson, and second, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Cole Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of six to one, so ordered. Uh, Council President, that finishes the docket with regard to the resolutions. We do have a couple of ordinances to set for public hearing. Public hearing will be set for July seventh. There is enough time to advertise both ordinances before that date. Council President, uh, this is the, uh, first is order twenty-one dash oh one four. Bond ordinance providing for the placement of the water main pipe along Olden Avenue in the Trenton Waterworks Service Area by the Water Utilities City of Trenton and the County of Mercy State and New Jersey appropriating four million dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of four million dollars of bonds or notes to finance the costs thereof. Do I have a motion for the introduction?
No.
I have a motion by Ms. Cole Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison. Uh, this is for public hearing on July the seventh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, just to note for the public, the schedule was amended tonight. That meeting in the second week in July has been moved to the first week in July. Uh, just to note for the record, for, uh, people who are remaining, uh, Council President, the floor is open. Would you like to move to the vote?
Yes, please.
Uh, this is the bond order twenty-one dash oh one four. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Say again. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Cole Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Uh, Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to ten. Well, I'm sorry, the, the introduction carries by a vote of five to ten. Public hearing for this matter will be set for July seventh, twenty twenty-one, at five thirty P M. Or soon thereafter as may be heard. Next, we have the introduction of ordinance twenty-one dash oh one six. This is community gardens program. I'm in a chapter of the city-owned property of Trenton to create a community gardens program. Do I have a motion?
No.
I have a motion by Ms. Cole Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open. Council President, would you like me to move to the vote?
Yes.
I have a question, Council President, about the community gardens. Quick question, um, to Ben Delisle. Um, so, uh, who's gonna provide oversight of these gardens?
Council, Council President, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Um, Councilwoman Vaughn, they, it'd be, the program would be administered in my office, um, through our real estate division. But we'd certainly work, um, collaboratively with both the health and, um, recreation departments.
So you're gonna provide oversight to the community gardens across the city? Um.
The, the city.
Pardon me? I'm sorry? Did you say something?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just meant the city-owned property.
Yeah, but that's gonna be utilized to certain, uh, citizens to plant gardens. Right? So your, so your department's gonna provide oversight to that, but yet we have a difficult time uh, giving oversight to these absentee landlords and these negligent landlords. Last night, we were on the call with the mayor, and certain constituents in my ward was complaining that the mayor has not fined the owner of the Mercer, um, the Mercer Hospital campus because we all know how it's kept. So here we are, we're gonna make sure, you're gonna make sure that you, um, uh, hold, uh, citizens accountable for the upkeep of the gardens, because gardens can get needy, right? Gardens can attract animals. So how are you gonna provide oversight? With what resources? Because you have no resources, right? You have to contract all the time. You have to outsource, contract. So how are you gonna provide oversight on these properties?
Council President?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman, you know, right now, there's, I, I would expect there to be, you know, a half a dozen to a dozen or so of these facilities or these places in the city. Um, it shouldn't be a very large burden. We'll certainly have inspectors go and check them for the, the enforcing city codes, but we would expect they would be, um, there'd be a, a sponsor, whether it's a nonprofit group or community group or, um, some individuals that would help maintain the gardens and provide oversight. If we find that they're, um, not being kept up, we would not, uh, extend or renew, uh, the agreements with them. They'd be, um, would, would cease the garden.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
Well, I'm a gardener. Whoever fears that their animals and stuff and gardens are not good could come to my house and take a look at, at a real garden. I support that program a hundred percent. Uh, as a matter of fact, we passed an ordinance the, uh, last year about the adopting the lots. The lots adoption, I don't know if you remember, so we could use those same lots to develop gardens in them. So there's no contradiction, and I support that a thousand percent.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Mr. Conlon, you can take.
The President. Council President.
Yes.
I, I agree with Mr. Santiago. I think it's a wonderful ideal. Uh, these are lots that could be overgrown, and there's a lot of people in the city, like Mr. Santiago, who have, uh, green thumb and they're able to grow all kind of vegetable, root, flowers, whatever. So at the end of the day, um, yeah, I, I think there's a lot of people that wanna, would, would, you know, like you said, if they're six to twelve. You said at the end of the day, there's people in the community that are really gifted and their gardens look beautiful, so, and they're good at growing up, you know, plants and, uh, flowers, so it would be a wonderful, uh, environment for the community. Thank you.
Continue with the vote, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am, this is set for public hearing for July seventh, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M. Or soon thereafter as may be heard. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Cole Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted for the public hearing at introduction, and the public hearing will be on July seventh, twenty twenty-one, at five thirty P M. Council President, that concludes all of the items on the docket, including the walk-on, uh, except for, uh, the public portion and civic comment. Would you like to open public part? May not allow leave to ask a question, instead of discretion during this portion. There's not a public hearing. Um, but if you wish to be addressed, uh, to, if you wish to address the Trenton City Council, uh, please let us know now. Ladies and gentlemen, just remind yourself to star six to unmute yourself if you are on a, uh, landline, uh, if you're on.
Mary Horn?
Yes, ma'am, Mary Horn.
Yes, yes, I'd just like to, uh, speak in reference to, uh, Director Coley first, if I may. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, read this into it, the math, a quote, uh, things which are equal to the same things are equal to each other. Fairness, justice, and balance. We should not be able to pick and choose because we deemed to be it necessary. Uh, earlier on in the year, uh, our, uh, mayor, uh, he was in complete compliance with the, uh, uh, with Director Coley, and, uh, nothing but good things to say. I don't know what changed in that period of time, but I do know that she fought hard for this, uh, real-time, uh, crime, uh, center. And now that it's in effect, it could only enhance her ability to do her job better. Now, with these changes, we know it's unforeseen. But I've been in this city all my life, so I can see some changes gonna be coming about that. So, uh, I, I am in, and I hope she fares with this. I know if there was votes against her, but I'm in compliance with her being, and I hope she wins if she seeks to be so in the city. And I agree with, why would you want to work with somebody that doesn't want to work with you? But that's not the point. She's been doing a job, and she hasn't done anything wrong besides that. And the mayor is in his seat because the people deem it necessary for him to be there. We are the voters, we are the taxpayers in this city. And having said that, you know, uh, there's work being done around the city, so maybe some of us in council, because work is being done in your area and, uh, uh, a lot of work's being done in, uh, in certain council members' areas, I see it every day I travel to, through the city. I, I see little being done in the West Ward. Why that is, I do not know. But I do know that there's less work being done in the West Ward. And we're some of the biggest taxpayer, taxpayers i- i- in the city. So I, I don't understand that, and, uh, as far as the lead line replacement, you know, monies are being here and there, and we could put a spin on how the money's being spent. We as taxpayers, we know different. You may look at us like we don't know what the money aspects of it are, but there's a lot of smart people here in the city, and we know that monies aren't being placed where they should be. Okay, we can see it every day. You take a ride through the city, and you can see for yourself. All right, and Councilwoman Vaughn, don't be dismayed because you have your own voice. They will always seek and vote against you because they seek to, 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 uh, vote in a group because maybe you have something to say. That's why you're talking so long. They allow people to come on and make comments, but when I do it, I'm being muted. I don't, I, I don't appreciate that part. But, and I do want to say something about, you know, about the sports that are in here for the inner-city kids. Okay, skate park, skate park it is, but you should encompass those other four sports too. Or attend to, uh, the areas that do have those sports and fix those areas up. They're in need of it too. And I don't know why people who are heading these sport facilities aren't on this call tonight. Now, I'm very taken back about that, but that's on you. So I'm gonna talk about it, you know? And so when we talk about the money, and, 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 and Councilwoman Vaughn talks about the money, that's because she knows about how the money's being spent, and she should be able to allow her voice, her voice to be heard on here. And not be, she may say things when she's on there and she's talking, but allow her to say what she wants to say. Because all I hear is that, oh, you saying it, Joe Hatt, excuse me, I won't even use his name. Councilmen will come on and say, you saying it because you want to run for mayor. Whatever they want to do, whatever they want to do, let them run. God bless them. You know, I've heard things too. You, you, that, that people are sure they're gonna get voted in because they know how the people think. So don't just pick one councilwoman and try to build a fence around her and double-team her because she says something. So I'm gonna get off that subject with her. I say that because I live in the West Ward. There's a lot of work to be done. We're the biggest ward. We've asked for tree trimming, we've asked for our line led replacement, we've asked for, uh, housing and economics, we asked for a whole lot of things. But we haven't gotten it yet. We've asked for, uh, uh, people to come out and, and, and look at all this boarded-up property. We, we, we talked about Mer- Mercer Hospital, that went on deaf ears. The people tell me all the time, they did talk to the mayor about that. He said, well, at least the guy is paying his taxes. Now, if, if I'm lying about that, then I'll get the person, the people who told me that live on Prospect Street, that's what they were told. But at the end of the day, we have to adhere to the taxpayers and the people who live in this city. Not try to down people because they are speaking on a subject. You vote your conscience. Okay, so be it. But do right by the people. And I don't see that. I don't see it at all. There's a lot of money coming into the city, and there's money being spent, but it's not being spent on the necessities and things that people need here in the city. So down here, at where the skate park's gonna be built, look at Charles Avenue, Perrineva. There's two houses left on Charles Avenue, two or three, that place, it, it's like a death, it's, it's deathless. And there's still people that live there. Oak Street, uh, Poplar Street, Hart Avenue, around the cemetery that's been built, you know, and cleaned up by our, our, uh, Algenon ward. He, as, as a matter of fact, Algenon, you've done a fantastic job. Thank you very much if you're on the call. But the surrounding areas, the homes and the streets and the roads, we need to get to that. And whether money's being designated, or we're waiting for monies to come in for certain things, let's do the right thing by the people. And you can take a spin on it, and because someone says something, and then you turn around and take a spin on the money that's being spent, yeah, or vote for this and vote for that, do right by the people. I don't see that. So that's all I gotta say tonight. Thank you very much for listening.
Next person, Mr. Conlon. Unmute yourself, Mr. Conlon.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, next man, we have Paul. Council President?
Yes.
Mr. Harris, you've been, you've been acknowledged.
Yes, good evening. Uh, I wanted to say, um, thank you for passing, uh, both those resolutions. But I also wanted to say, since it didn't seem to be said tonight, to all of our employees here who came to work and struggled when there was no plexiglass, there was no mask, there was no gloves, there was none of that. None of that at all. Uh, and we got that over time, but we, you know, but you took that risk for solid waste who came every day, while Dr. Fauci was on TV and CDC was on TV saying that you can get this, you can get the virus by what you touch. For the, for the people who worked at sewer, the person who worked at sewer who ended up in the, uh, ICU. For the public works worker who had COVID, not once, not twice, but three times. We honor you. We thank you for your service. For the police department that was decimated by this. We're talking about twenty-five percent of our people contracted COVID-nineteen. That's just people who got the virus. We're not even talking about the men and women who had to quarantine as a result of this. Keep them in mind. And the other thing is, we met with everybody on, we met with council, we talked to council members, this is in April. I live right, I live three houses down from a council person. I'm confused. If anyone had any questions or concerns, you could have reached out directly to union leadership. Ask me, took the lead on this, we brought in police and fire, we wanted to be united. Because, listen, everybody took a risk. And just so we're crystal clear, because people like making stuff up, if you were at home. if you were at home and you stayed at home the entire crisis, you're not getting a dime. You're not getting a dime because that's what the law says. Now, had someone asked that question instead of suggesting that we were gonna break the law, we would've told you that. Not only that, but everybody's not getting $7,000. There is 367 people who aren't getting it. You know why they're not getting it? Because they have time off. My point is that, listen, you guys get on these calls, and you, you think you know what's going on, but you have no clue. Ask for the facts. I would've great, I would've glad you give, give me that data. 367 people are getting some reduced amount because they were either a military time sick leave, even people who had COVID-19. The federal law doesn't care. It says time, you have to be physically present on a job site. I wanna be crystal clear about that. You know, but, you know, we have to show a little more respect here. Uh, there's a lot of things said, and let me just be crystal clear again, because I've told people on council, including the council president and West Ward Councilwoman, why the contract is not settled. And for the, and for the members, and for the members, I wanna speak uninterrupted. For the members on this call, was we, the employees, had I listened to the two of them, had we listened to the two of them, and we settled this contract in 2019 or 2020, you would've got 0%. Do you know why you would've got 0%? Because the monitor at that time was, was playing hardball. We got a good deal, and it took us to get to 2021 to get that deal. So they can talk until they're blue in the face, but let me tell you what I.
That's a bunch of crap.
Okay, are you finished? Are you finished? Because it's not your time to speak.
Don't, don't, don't sit here and exaggerate. That's a bunch of crap.
Kathy, you weren't at the, you weren't at the table. Kathy, you're not gonna speak over me. You're not gonna, this, here's what we're gonna do. Either I'm speaking or you're speaking. Who, how are we gonna do this? You can't. I'm not done yet.
Yes, I can.
So that's what you're doing now? This is what we're doing? Is this Russia?
When you come here and lie.
Kathy, did you say, what lie? What lie did I tell you?
That if you had to settle that contract, they wouldn't have got anything.
Kathy, the monitor.
They would've always gotten 2%.
That's a liar, Kathy. Kathy, the monitor at the time.
Somebody else told you, and that's not true.
Kathy, I sat at the, I sat at the table. You don't have to hear it. I have another rally and say, what are you talking about? I sat at the table. You do care. Obviously, you voted yes tonight because you must know the power of union. You voted yes, didn't you? You better get, get out of here with that mess. You always have something to say.
Sir, I, I understand the situation. Please be respectful to Council President.
Respectful?
Sir, please do not attack Council President.
I'm confused, because ma'am, what you always say is, she wants to speak, and she wants to not be interrupted.
Technically, her meeting and, you know, and, and.
I haven't insulted her.
I let you, I let you go back and forth, but you, you gotta, you gotta. You're calling her name.
It's a council meeting. Thank you. So, listen. There is only four of us who sat at the negotiation table. Nobody on this council sat at this table. I'm not making stuff up. I'm telling you what I know for a fact. And I'm saying this, and we don't negotiate in public, because for years now, people have said that the union has done a disservice to its people. We have a great deal that's coming, and I'm just tell, here to tell you, whether you believe me or not, I couldn't have settled it before, and I would not have settled it. And I'm, and we won't be forced to settle a contract by council and/or the mayor or DCA if it's a bad deal. That's a fact. It wasn't 2%. And I told you guys it wasn't 2%. Uh, you know, anyway, I just, we mean well, but sometimes you gotta wait for your prize. And we waited, and we got, and, and we're here. We're at a good point here. Uh, and that's all I gotta say. I just, I think there needs to be more respect going both ways. I, I think that. I think that. I think you get mad, Council President, and you shut people down, but listen. Can I finish?
No, sir, not when you're attacking.
The clerk's office is on the list.
It's part of the decorum of this meeting. Thank you.
Right, decorum. I'm done.
Council President, next we have Sherri Garrett.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garrett. Thank you, Council President, uh, McBride. Uh, a few things, um, when you were in executive, when the council was executive session, um, there was conversation, uh, among the residents, especially, um, it, I, I, you probably, you know her name, it's Ms. Paulette. She's with the, I think, East Ward Cooperative. And, uh, made a statement, I don't know why she was, why she wasn't on a call Tuesday, but she brought it to our attention that, um, the folks in East Trenton around Terrell Avenue and around where that skate park is, uh, gonna be located, they were against that there being a skate, a skating skate park in that area. You know, and, um, said that it was bought up, um, prior. I forgot what the timeline was, or I'm not sure if she'd been mentioning it. And she said, um, she thought it was a done deal, that there would not be a skating, a skate, skate park, skateboard park, um, on the east side of Trenton. Um, that mentioning, um, and, um, the one reason she was stating that was the parking congestion, um, the, so, it's just, and, and then she made a statement that the area is so blighted that, uh, the city is gonna put a skating, a skateboard park there, beautiful skate park there, but the neighborhood is very blighted, no money into the neighborhood. So that was her comment. I don't know if she's still on here because it's late. Um, also, uh, just a suggestion, if we could move the executive sessions on another day or have the executive sessions, just a thought, uh, the executive sessions a couple of hours before the council session. If, you know, um, uh, in regards to, uh, former Director Sheila Coley, uh, if, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, I'm, I'm telling you that you were fabulous on that. You were so on point about that. Um, you know, about especially people of color, you know, with no care about how we're dealt with in employment. Um, we just fire, you just go, but the, oh, the main issue I have with, uh, the determination, well, the, the letting go of, of Sheila Coley is the fact that how the mayor just tarnished her reputation. I mean, just flat out, just made it seem like, you know, she was in con, even though he tried to build it up, but the way he went about it, you know, i- i- it, it wasn't correct. It was not correct, not how you do things. Um, I also stated, I was on a call yesterday for the, uh, mayor's presentation of his draft proposal of the American Rescue Act, and I can inject, uh, to the mayor and the council. I started trying to rework some of those numbers. I will be submitting that. And for the hazard, hazards, hazards pay, I'm not correct, but I thought when the gentleman, I'm not sure if he, he was the, from where he was from, I kinda got on the call a little bit after the call started yesterday, but I do recall seeing the maximum that each person is gonna be getting for the hazards pay was no more than $13. So, uh, you know, to me, if people are working in that role, that you should be getting at least a portion of what your hourly salary is, unless the, uh, the folks who are getting it, uh, a- a- all make $13 an hour, but I recall that the maximum they could get per hour was $13 an hour. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, 'cause everybody making all this big noise about this hazards pay, but I, I, I did that twice, 'cause I winked, and I said, wait a minute. You only get, the max you can get for hazards pay was $13 an hour? I don't know if anybody saw that. Um, I think, oh, and, um, in regards to, um, uh, Resolution 21274, 21275, 21276, and 21277, you know, you gotta get your power. And I am for the council, council, uh, the, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, Councilwoman, uh, uh, McBride, uh, Councilman, uh, um, Rodriguez, power to you. You gotta get your power back. No more of this crap. You know, come on now, we, we, the, the, the stance is every, uh, time these bills come in for, for us or these proposals come up for spending money, there's no accountability. It's about time, you know? Thank you. I, I, you know, thank you. You, I, I, thank you. Um, that's, I think, uh, about it. Um, uh, again, um, please. Oh, and another thing, uh, the, also, I was looking at, uh, the, uh, the oversight, and each person that who's supposed to receive the, um, hazardous pay, you have to notate, uh, their names, their positions, all that information, so it can't be blended in. I think what they did, you know, the hours they worked, so it's not like we just give a list and toss it to the feds and say, here, these are the people got it, and we, we spent this. You gotta give the actual dollar amount, real detailed breakdown. So, um, if anybody thinks, you know, an administration is just gonna be a cake walk to spend this money, it's not. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Council President, next we have, uh, Larry Plank, uh, Plankton.
Laurie Plankton, uh, I am a West Ward resident, um, not only MIO, West Ward resident. I am a mother of two children who attend the Trenton Public Schools. And I am also a member of, uh, Local 2286. I work for the City of Trenton Fire Department as a clerk. Um, respectfully, I would like to say that, um, in my opinion, every member of council, um, has made several comments that, um, are valid. I agree in many ways with each one of you, and I respect your opinion. Um, but I would also like to remind folks, um, I'm an employee of the fire department, and I am not a firefighter, but I was exposed to working with the first responders. But that's not, um, it. I am in support of every other city employee because we must remember, when this all first started, as a mother, I was, um, for a lack of words, um, I was, I felt like I was tied down. My children could not attend school. Um, there was no daycares. Um, I have, I am a person who has no family around my way to rescue me in the time of need, so I had to figure it out. Um, we were placed on a A and B schedule, uh, in some cases, and yes, I do have a letter that states that I am an essential employee, but at one point, I had no choice but to listen to my superiors, whether I had to work A and B or every single day. It was not my decision. It was based on our, you know, protecting each other from each other. And that's why the A and B schedules were, um, were made. Um, so I feel like we were, we didn't have a decision on that. A lot of us, for instance, myself, when I was home at the beginning of this, my, uh, director required that we checked in at a specific time from our own personal devices at home, which the city did not afford my, um, internet or my computer access or anything like that. Um, I had to share my devices with my children, and I had to make it work. So, yeah, a lot of, of the, um, work wasn't getting done because it was, um, physically impossible. We were not in the offices, and we were not afforded, um, certain benefits by using our own devices, which, let's remember, our devices are not city devices, so we were all trying to make this work because of the situation. Um, I myself, I am not entitled to the entire $7,000 because I was out for, um, a month or two, uh, uh, because of my own medical, um, situations. And, and I'm fine with that, but even during that time, I was still trying to help, um, the city, my job. I contributed with whatever I could, um, because I knew that were, there were certain things that needed to be taken care of. But let's forget that. What I'm just, uh, uh, my point is, um, I understand where you guys are all coming from, but place yourself back in the time, in the uncertainty that we were all living when all of this happened, okay? I am sure that a lot of you have lost someone close to you during this time, and how scary it was. You were scared to go anywhere, bring that back to your children, your parents, your grandparents, anybody. Okay, so a lot of these folks that were working from home on an A and B basis, it wasn't their choice. We were told we needed to do this because we needed to protect each other. Um, I agree with what you guys are saying. I agree with, uh, President, uh, of, um, council in certain ways that the monies, it's not just $7,000 for each, and it's bigger than that, and it's 73 or whatever million, and we are, we need to be accountable for that. But let's not forget what happened, and it wasn't based on our decision, how the schedules were handled. And yes, some of us may not be entitled to everything. Some of us may be entitled to a portion. Some of us may not be entitled to anything at all. But let's not forget that this is, this, we didn't, we didn't, um, create this. We did not, um, implement the laws or how we were going to go about this situation. Um, we are still learning how to deal with some of the situations that arise from this. So, um, be thoughtful about everyone. Um, obviously, um, we're not rich, like many of them say, a lot of us. I myself, I don't make over $40,000, and I bust my behind at my job. And I'm proud of what I do, and I, and I do believe it, and I'm sure that there's a lot of folks that can back me on that. Um, but it's not about me. It's about the rest of us. Um, it's about, it's beyond the $7,000. Yes, we are, um, some folk may have done more here and there based on the, um, nature of their jobs. But we were all here together. We all pushed through this together, and I feel like all of us are entitled to that little bit of money. And yes, it's bigger than that, but let's not make a big deal about that. It's not coming out of your pockets, okay? You're not paying for this out of your own bank account. And it was given to us for a reason. And yes, let's make it work. Let's make people accountable, accountable. Thank you for your services, council. I agree with each one of you in several different, um, aspects of your arguments. And some, no, I don't, but that's what, what, that's what, is life, that's how life is. We're gonna have to agree to disagree, and we need to grow up a little bit. We make these meetings, and it, it's, it's becoming a little ratchet, like, bring it back, take it back. Like you guys say, make, make yourself proud of being a Trentonian, all right? Instead of making us an embarrassment, because there's a lot of people here who really care. And, you know, i- i- we just kinda lose focus, but I want to thank you all for your time, for, um, fighting on our behalfs. Let's remember, um, what this is all about. Don't lose track. Keep your fight. Thank you for your so, service, okay? Thank you.
Next, Council President, we have Caroline.
Good night.
Uh, Caroline, if you could state your last name for the record?
My name is Caroline.
Your last name for the record, ma'am.
Clark.
Council President, Caroline Clark.
May I proceed?
Uh, Council Vice Chair, are you still here? Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was muted.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand, ma'am. It's, it's late.
Okay, thank you. So, um, regarding, uh, the resolution that was passed regarding the fiscal monitor, I'd like to know who chooses the fiscal monitor. So that's my first question. My second is not a question, it's a comment. Um, I think it's great that, um, we want to do something nice for the city workers. Um, but the rescue plan itself defines who is an essential worker. That definition is not up to council or the mayor. The Rescue Act itself defines who is an essential worker relative to the pandemic. And it states that it's any individual who does essential work, either as an employee or independent contractor. Such work does not include teleworking, as Councilwoman Caldwell stated, working from home, but involves regular in-person interaction with patients, the general public, or with a coworker who performs his work, or by regularly physically handling items handled by patients, the public. the public, or coworkers who do that. I say that to say we ought not to get confused with who we appreciate, who did heroic work versus what the Rescue Act mandate states. And we must abide by that definition to ensure that we don't run afoul of the mandate, and then we have our money taken, even though we have the best of intentions at heart. Good night, Trenton.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be identified, or, excuse me, anybody else wish to speak for the public portion of the, of the Trenton City Council meeting of June 24th, now June 25th? Ladies and gentlemen, of the members of the public, anybody else wish to speak? This is the second call. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
I have motion to close public portion by Mr. Rodriguez. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We are adjourned at 1:04 a.m. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much to the clerk's office staff who did meet the public every single day during the pandemic.
Thank you, sir, for your work. Thank you. You people did great.
And to all the other city employees as well, because it was hard on everybody. Great, I appreciate it. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.